Welcome to this May 18th District Regular Board of Education Meeting. We'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Chow?
Here.
Ms. Cartha?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Rikis?
Here.
Ms. Garrison?
Here.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Here. We start the evening with a public hearing about a 5% administrative cap resolution. This public hearing is now called to order. The District 65 School Board holds this public hearing to consider a waiver on the limitation of administrative costs set forth in Section 17.1.5 of the Illinois School Code. We will hear any public testimony regarding the waiver. Please keep in mind that all comments should be addressed to the Board, and speakers will be given three minutes to make remarks. Are there any public comments at this point? No? That concludes the public hearing, and the Board will vote on the holiday waiver on the 5% cap for today's meeting. Okay, we'll have an approval of the agenda, Minister. I move that the Board approve tonight's meeting agenda with an amendment to include part of the consent agenda, item number 25, out of District Student Transportation bid, previously discussed on the May 11th, 2015 Finance Committee meeting. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes, the motion passes seven to zero. Formal presentations from the public, and we'll have Paula. You.
Hello, I'm Paula Zalinski. I'm president of the District 65 Educators Council. First of all, congratulations to our Golden Apple winners. We have two things on the agenda tonight that we're interested in very much, the calendar for 1617. I wanted to say that the Calendar Committee, Beatrice and Melissa, did a great job. It was really a lot of work. For the most part, we are in agreement on some of the details on the calendar. There's one particular item, President's Day being used as an emergency day for 1617. I just want to make sure everyone understands that, you know, the teachers' sort of objection to this is that we also want to be able to make plans just like everybody else. So, since, you know, this calendar is being put out more than a year ahead of time, we think it's only fair that people actually be able to plan for, in that case, it's a We wanted to also say that there's an election date is on the calendar for 1617. DEC has been expressing real concern over just the safety of the buildings because we have to use the schools, some of the schools, for these elections, and we really appreciate that being included. The second item I just wanted to bring up was, you're discussing the principal search process tonight. We read the memo and are very interested to hear, you know, the Board discussion on this process. We're happy to see it in writing. And I did want to point out once again that, you know, DEC has been asking really to play a meaningful role in the principal search. So, we look forward to hearing your discussion tonight. Thanks so much, bye-bye.
Thank you. We now turn to some recognitions and celebrations. This is always one of my favorite Board meetings of the year, where we get to celebrate teachers, administrators, parents, PTA members, and students. So first, I'll turn it over to you, Paul, for the City of Evanston National Drinking Water Week. Laura Biggs will be here to present.
Thank you very much to the District 65 School Board for allowing us to come here tonight. My name is Laura Biggs, and I'm with the Utilities Department at the City of Evanston. Our purpose with National Drinking Water Week is to celebrate water by recognizing the essential role it plays in our lives. And in honor of National Drinking Water Week, which was actually May 5th through May 11th, the City of Evanston held a third-grade art contest and a middle-school photography contest. This year, the city chose the theme "Drinkability" in recognition of the role of clean, safe, reliable drinking water in our community. We had a number of classrooms and individual participants from the third graders throughout District 65 and other third grades in Evanston participate, and we actually received over 150 entries for the contest. The best entries were selected for online voting, and that included 17 students from District 65. All these students are being recognized, and tonight, we actually have a few of our students here, so I'd like to invite them up to kind of display their artwork for you. So, we have Lilia Flores from Dawes Elementary. Lilia? And then we have Sage Verhely-Davis from Dewey School. And Avery Venata from Dewey also. We actually had a number of other winners. We had Olivia Kaidang from King Arts, Elise Barnett, Anna Silver from Washington, and Gabrielle Gary from Washington School, Maggie Huerta and Emmett Victorson from Kingsley, Gabrielle Breakwall from Kingsley, Kylan Ann McLennan from Orington, Madison Bates from Dewey, Angelina Yang from Lincoln, Caroline Gredinger from Lincoln, and Ella Alte from Orington. We had two top winners that were chosen from this pool. Shadani Tamayo from Dawes was the mayor's choice, and the winner of the Water Spirit Award was Logan Hagani from King Arts. And we also had a middle-school photography contest, Sebastian Valenzuela. So, these winners were recognized at our City Council meeting on April 27. All of our honorees had their artwork displayed at the Evanston Main Library during National Drinking Water Week, and it's also going to be displayed at the Green Ball, which is on May 29th. I encourage all of you to attend our Green Ball and take a look at it. And finally, I would like to say thank you to all the District 65 teachers and staff that really help support this contest. Most of our artwork comes through them, and their support in helping our youngest residents form connections in their daily lives to their community and to the services provided by local government really provides an invaluable lesson. We appreciate it very much. We could not do this without them. So, thank you very much.
Before you all sit down, will you come over here and show us your artwork? We'd really like to see it. Thank you.
Fantastic. That's really cool. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Oh, cool.
That's great. That's really great.
Thanks.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much for coming. Now, we have our Golden Apple recognition.
And it's a, thank you again, that's really fantastic work. It's really my pleasure to honor our three Golden Apple finalists and our one Golden Apple winner tonight before us. And I'm hoping, Greg, Andrea, and James, that you're out there somewhere. And why don't you come on up, and we'll toast you in a second. I do want to note that we had a fantastic opportunity to honor three finalists in the Golden Apple competition. Greg Daniels, who's a kindergarten teacher at Oakton, who's not here this evening, Andrea Maxud, who's a third-grade TWE teacher at Oakton Elementary, and James Schamber, who's a second-grade teacher at Orington Elementary. And the awards, the Golden Apple Awards, honor and recognize outstanding teachers for their role in building a stronger and better society, and indeed, in the work that they do day in and day out in our classrooms. There were 30 finalists selected from a pool of over 600 nominations, and they, this year, represented pre-K through third-grade teachers. And indeed, of 30 finalists, we had three finalists, and it's just absolutely spectacular. Let me give a little background on our three finalists. Mr. Daniels, Greg Daniels, who's not here this evening, has spent the last 21 years as a kindergarten teacher at Oakton Elementary, and has coached the Oakton Cougars coed flag football team for 20 of those years. He's someone who enjoys teaching teamwork, sportsmanship, and he's always able to bring that philosophy into his kindergarten classroom. Now, in your second year here in the district at Oakton, Andrea Maxud is a third-grade teacher in the two-way immersion program. Prior to coming to District 65, she taught in the Chicago Public Schools for 13 years. Collaborative by nature, she enjoys working with colleagues to enhance the diverse community that is Oakton Elementary School. And James Schamber has been a second-grade teacher at Orington Elementary for the past nine years. He was nominated for his passion and dedication to teaching, and I think for your humor, as far as what you use in the classroom. And he demonstrates an ability to create a strong and supportive learning community, and is motivated to help even the most reluctant learner learn a rare skill that our three finalists, as well as most, if not all, of our teachers across the district have. These are our three finalists, and I want to give a big round of applause. We could not be more proud of all of our teachers and what you represent on behalf of all of our teachers, and the two of you, and Greg, who's not here tonight. And I do want to also tip my hat to James, who last week had the Golden Apple Foundation show up at his classroom with newscasters from Channel 7, or Channel 9 and Channel 11. And the most remarkable thing that happened was when we all walked in the room with your family, your parents, and your wife, and your beautiful children, we walked in the room, and the children stood up and said, "We won." And it was such a lovely moment, and it was such a lovely moment, and so exciting. So, on behalf of the administration, on behalf of the Board, to you, James, Andrea, to Greg, again, we couldn't be more proud of you, and we have a little token of our appreciation to give to you. And let's do one more round of applause.
Okay, we're now on to our Phyllis Ganser PTA Volunteer of the Year Award.
Those are two very hard acts, so Paul. My name is Phyllis Ganser Levinson, and I have the honor tonight to present the 2015 Phyllis Ganser Outstanding PTA Volunteer of the Year Award. I'd like to thank the Board for continuing to host our presentation at the main meeting, and I'd also like to introduce the members of the committee who are here. Dolly Floater, who herself is an award winner, and she's got the plaque, and her name's on there. Katie Hart, Laura Anclin, Laura Vogel, and Kristen James. And Katie and Kristen are active, current PTA members among the many stellar PTA volunteers that we have. This award was created to honor Phyllis Ganser, who was my sister. In January of 2000, Phyllis passed away after a two-year battle with breast cancer. Sorry, I don't even want to read this. I want to speak it, but I'm having trouble turning the page. The Phyllis Ganser Outstanding PTA Volunteer of the Year Award was created by the District 65 and District 202 Council PTAs to be awarded annually to commemorate Phyllis as a dedicated volunteer, her passionate promotion of the welfare of all the district's children, and her commitment to the goals of the PTA. She was the first recipient. Phyllis was a product of the Evanston Schools having started kindergarten at Dawes, going on to Skiles Junior High, and she graduated from Evanston High School in 1970. Phyllis and her husband Jeff had three children, David, Jessica, and Adam. They all attended Walker, Chute, and ETHS. Her son, Adam, and daughter Jessie were at Walker, and her oldest son David was a freshman at ETHS at the time of Phyllis's death. All three of her children, now 29, 25, and 22, are doing well, and Adam is graduating this month from Hamilton College in New York City. The Phyllis Ganser Outstanding PTA Volunteer of the Year Award honors an individual, or occasionally two individuals, who have demonstrated true dedication in their service to PTA and to the community. Each year since Phyllis's death, the committee has solicited nominations for the award from the PTA and school communities. We, the committee members, all having been active PTA members ourselves, are always incredibly impressed with the quality of the volunteers nominated. Of course, we are aware that only a fraction of many deserving people are brought to our attention. Each nominee has stellar accomplishments, and it's very difficult to arrive at an awardee, or, in some cases, awardees. Based on Phyllis's own commitment and activities, we look for the following qualities in the nominees. A commitment to the PTA goal of promoting the welfare of all schoolchildren. A willingness to work in any capacity, even behind the scenes. A spirit and enthusiasm for volunteer work. And a demonstrated ability to engage and involve other volunteers. Additionally, the award recipient must be a member of the PTA. This is one of those years when we were unable to choose only one recipient, and in a few minutes, we will announce the names of two outstanding volunteers. Our pool is so impressive that I'd like to mention the other nominees and give you a nutshell impression of the breadth and depth of commitment, work, and dedication of the volunteers in our community. It really is stunning, even to those of us who have been there ourselves. I'd like to note, just as an aside, that we receive nominations in a variety of ways, sometimes by one individual, sometimes by a duo, a group, or a committee, and sometimes we receive more than one nomination for the same person. Any and all of those ways are great, and we want to acknowledge the hard work that goes into putting someone up for the award. And, incidentally, it's not unusual to receive a nomination for a person who has nominated someone else. In addition to this year's award recipients, we received nominations for the following exceptional volunteers. Debbie Price is the mother of a Chute eighth grader and also has a student at Indiana University. Debbie, who has served as a Chute PTA co-president, has done a yeoman's job of supporting and promoting arts. As an artist, she has brought enrichment to all the Chute students, including poetry slams, improv classes, and artist-in-residence programs. In addition to program implementation, Debbie finds funding and resources to support programming at the school. We are all hopeful that Debbie will continue as a strong parent volunteer at ETHS as her son moves on to high school. Michelle Hayes, individually and as a team with her husband Jason Hayes, has been nominated by more than one person. Michelle has been PTA president at Chute, stepping up for numerous additional activities as well. She sounds like the kind of person who can take charge or delegate, a great combination. Her husband Jason also takes on substantial responsibilities. He has coordinated the Pancake Breakfast at both Washington and Chute. It's been noted that they are both willing to take on tasks, large and small, including many that don't receive public acknowledgement. Their son is an eighth grader at Chute this year. ETHS will be lucky to have both Hayes's and the parent community as well. We also received a nomination for Jane McCarthy, an ETHS and Haven parent. Over the years, she has been an active volunteer at Kingsley, Haven, and ETHS. She has strengths in keeping people engaged and organized. She is good manager, and as her nominator says, quote, "What she can do, she does well. She follows through, and she always does it with a smile and friendly manner," close quote. Liz Brieva, and I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, is another one of our nominees. She's an avid supporter of athletics, coaching girls' basketball and volleyball. She's involved with the Battle of the Books program. She supports all the girls, including those who would be unable to participate without the support of a willing volunteer. Her nominator says about her, I forgot my word, I'm sorry. Liz has the best spirit of what we at Kingsley are all about. Everything she does is done with a smile and her willingness to go the extra mile that we do. Liz is the mother, that was a quote, and that was a close quote at the end of "extra mile." Liz is the mother of Cecilia, a Kingsley student, and she has six other children. Dan Chow, a Kingsley and Haven parent, is another of our nominees this year. Dan has worked on the Vision Committee and School Advisory Committee at Kingsley. He's also a math tutor. Dan is organized and dedicated. He attends district meetings to find strategies to help struggling students. His nominator says, quote, "He shows up with a smile and is always willing to help," close quote. Sarah Lang, a Lincoln School parent, has an extensive resume of PTA activities. She has served as a co-president at Lincoln for two years. She has been a spring benefit co-chair and volunteer teacher. Sarah has successfully recruited parents who had not previously been involved, and certainly not least. She's credited with being a driving force behind creation of the massive murals exhibited on the school's outside walls. Some of her work is visible to many residents of and visitors to Evanston. Ta-da. As I mentioned, this year's award is being presented to two recipients. Jenny Savari, a Washington and Nichols parent, and Diane LePoir, again, my apologies if I'm not pronouncing that correctly, mother of Dewey and ETHS students. You can tell from what's gone before how remarkable these two volunteers are. Jenny has a lengthy resume, which includes creating a building and grounds committee at Washington, chairing the committee, and transforming grounds of the school. It might behoove every member of the community to take a ride over to Washington and look at the results. We would have liked, part of the nomination was pictures of the grounds, and we would very much have liked to present that to you, but we couldn't quite figure out how to do it. So, go yourself. Jenny included every student and numerous parents, every student and numerous parents in creating the edible and artistic gardens there. She's obtained grants for tree planting and landscaping, including creation of a butterfly garden. She has also served as Nichols PTA president. There, she helped raise funds to upgrade the library. She's worked on school communication and feeder-school welcome events. Jenny is called "jack-of-all-trades" by her nominator, but as I was going over this, I realized that the rest of that phrase is "and a master of none," and it sounds to me as though Jenny is a master of many things. She puts her, this is a quote, "She puts her can-do attitude to excellent use in everything she takes on, and certainly has demonstrated her willingness, time and time again, to jump in when a need arises," close quote. Diane LePoir, also this year's recipient, is mother of a Dewey student and an ETHS student. She has served in numerous capacities at Dewey and Nichols Schools. She's been a room parent for eight years, PTA treasurer, co-president, books and breakfast volunteer, and Everybody Reads Fluency volunteer, and those are just some of her roles. Diane challenges herself and everyone around her to deliver the PTA goal for every child. As a room parent in a TWE program school, Diane has never let language be a barrier. She finds people to make phone calls in Spanish when necessary, and arranges rides for families who might otherwise not be able to attend events. Diane believes that if a parent feels welcome at Dewey, the student will reap the benefits of belonging to a thriving community. Diane's nomination also includes comments that call her an exemplary volunteer, talks about her generosity of spirit, and how her volunteerism has expanded from a start in the classroom to school-wide and district-wide activities. One comment states, quote, "Diane embodies a spirit of service that is demonstrated, not just in the many ways in which she serves the Evanston community, but in her willingness to pitch in to help others succeed." If Diane and Jenny are here, would you come up, please? I'd also like to acknowledge the nominators of these two outstanding recipients. Diane was nominated by Elizabeth Webster, a full-Dewey parent and volunteer with health and authors, and record class, submitted the nomination for Jenny. On behalf of the Washington PTA, if you're here, would you stand up or raise your hands or make some comments? We have such extraordinary volunteers in our community, those who receive the Phyllis Ganser Outstanding PTA Volunteer, and who represent the best of us. Congratulations. Other nominees, if you could please stand up so we can acknowledge you. I wish to tell that one of the principals would like to say 30 seconds worth of words, shorter-winded than I am. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I think on behalf of the Dewey School, and I think Kay wants to say just a few words just how amazingly grateful we are for the service that, I know for both schools, but especially at Dewey, Diane has offered, and I thought this is really important, the partnership between the schools and our parents has been, is amazing. And I surveyed all the, as many teachers as I could, and words like "amazingly dedicated," "giving it considerate," "smart," "guided support," "dedicated," "thorough." First person I email when I have a question from a teacher, so respectful, just steady, just reliable, just amazing, and the list goes on. So, we are truly honored to know you and to work with you, and I know you hate this, so, but we are truly grateful for the service.
Can I echo Mr. Calgady's remarks about the partnership and how important that is between the school and parents, and we are so grateful for the hard work of all of our PTA volunteers. My favorite story about Jenny Savari, we've heard about all the magnificent things she's done in the gardens, and we didn't even really talk about what she's done with the library, but this summer, I walked out in the hallway one day, and Jenny was there with an electronic drill, drilling pictures into the wall, and setting up our hallways to become the welcoming place that they are. So, she truly is a jack-of-all-trades, and we really are grateful for all the work that she's done.
And I can't resist adding my two cents. I have had the privilege of having my own children for the eight years Diane was a room parent in those rooms, for eight years, and I would argue that actually, when she wasn't actually the room parent, she did all the work anyway. And the way she's enriched my children's lives and the lives of all the kids in the class and in the school has been truly amazing, so, thank you.
All right, we're now on to the Energy Star Award presentation. Lee Coleman?
Well, hello, good evening, and Lee Coleman, I'm part-time energy manager with the district. I met most of you, I think some of you are new, but what I'd like to do is kind of talk to you, read a little bit about what Energy Star is and what it means. The Energy Star score is a measure of how well your property is performing relative to similar properties when normalized for climate and operational characteristics. The Energy Star scores are based on data from national building, energy consumption surveys. This allows portfolio manager to control for key variables affecting buildings' energy performance, including climate, hours of operation, and building size. What this means is that buildings from around the country with different operating parameters and subject to different weather patterns can be compared side by side in order to see how they stack up in terms of energy performance. The specific factors that are included in the normalization are hours, workers, climate, et cetera, will depend on the property type. The 1 to 100 scale is set so that 1 represents the worst-performing buildings and 100 represents the best-performing buildings. A score of 50 indicates that the building is performing at a national median. Taking into account the size, location, operating parameters, a score of 75 indicates that a property is performing in the 75th percentile and may be eligible to earn an Energy Star certificate. And so, a little background, as a district, we're at a rating of 64 for our entire portfolio as a district, and this year, we had seven buildings earn Energy Star award. And I invited, or representatives from the seven schools were invited, so hopefully someone came. But the winners are Betsy Rhodes, Kingsley Elementary, Haven Middle School, Walker Elementary, Nichols Middle School, Lincolnwood Elementary, and Shute Middle School. So, if there's any representative that would like to come up at this time? Each building receives a certificate. There's a certificate inside, and there's a decal that can be labeled outside the building, or it's already listed. So, thanks, and thanks for coming on. I know this is a busy time of year, but thanks for all your performance.
Now, Board of District Communications, start with you.
Sure. I want to just do three quick highlights. One, I had the pleasure, along with many of us, to participate in the YEA festival, the YEA festival, over the weekend, and it just was a smashing success. The festival organizers moved off of Dempster Street and Chicago Avenue into Raymond Park, created an arts festival type of atmosphere. And again, I want to tip my hat to all of the arts teachers, the principals, everybody who was engaged, and it really made for a wonderful Saturday festive occasion to honor the fantastic arts and multimedia work that our children do and that our colleagues who work in the classrooms do. And so, kudos to the Arts Department, kudos to the YEA festival, and we'll look forward to seeing that again back at Raymond Park or another park next year. Just wanted to highlight that the Story Pirates performed at Park School on Thursday and Friday of last week. This is an annual event, and it was, from everything I heard, it was a fantastic moment again and again, so I want to thank them. And then, just a quick update on the principal searches that we have underway. We're alive and well and scanning through applications. We'll have public interviews, actually, going on for the Oakton search on May 26th and the Nichols search on May 27th, and we look forward to that engagement as well. And that's my report.
Great. Board of Communications.
I just wanted to say a thank you to the PTA Council and the PTAs who enabled us to have a teacher appreciation lunch at Rice Center last week during, was it the last two weeks, last week during Teacher Appreciation Week. It's the third year in a row that each of the PTAs has contributed at Rice. There isn't the same type of parent community, and so, for three years, we've been able to honor those teachers. They do amazing work with students at Rice, and they were so very grateful for the appreciation. So, I wanted to thank the PTAs for funding that.
Thank you. Any other communications? Okay, so now we will move on to our consent agenda, and that is Suni.
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve personnel leave retirement separations. April 2015 Board of Education meeting minutes, Finance Committee meeting minutes, February 2015 City School Liaison meeting minutes, January 2015 Policy Committee minutes, recommended wellness policy, destruction of April 2013 closed session audio recordings, recommended release of executive session minutes from January through June 2012, March and April 2015 list of bills, school treasurer reports, and budget amendments, technology software expenditures, reappointment of school treasurer, renewal of school treasurer bond, 5% administrative cap resolution, out-of-district student transportation bid for fiscal year 16 through 18, food service satellite meals program contract for fiscal year 16, and 2015-16 board meeting calendar.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci? Yes, motion passes seven to zero. Claudia will have the approval of the executive session.
I move that the Board of Education recess into executive session on June 8th, 2015, for the purpose of discussing matters regarding negotiations, personnel, and litigation.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
And Ms. Quattrucci? Yes, the motion passes seven to zero. Student transportation services bid, Richard?
I move that the Board of Education reject the bids that were opened on May 4th, 2015, from All Town and Positive Connections for in-district student transportation services for FY 16 through FY 18.
Second?
Second.
And Mary, would you discuss any of this, or explain it, or?
I can explain. We opened bids, we went out for bid for bus service, actually, twice, and the bids that we opened most recently contained an error, so we are recommending that those bids opened on May 4th be rejected, and that is what you're voting on at this time.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci? Yes, the motion passes seven to zero. And now we'll have Omar, the rescinding of the bus bid rejection of April 27.
I move that the Board of Education rescind their April 27, 2015 vote to reject the bid for in-district student transportation services for fiscal year 16 through fiscal year 18 from Positive Connections, which was open on April 13, 2015.
Second, please.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci? Yes, the motion passes seven to zero. Now, Candace, the approval is a must bid.
I move that the Board of Education approve the bid from Positive Connections that was opened on April 13, 2015, for in-district student transportation services for fiscal year 16 through fiscal year 18, subject to the terms contained in District 65's bid specifications relating to that April 13, 2015 bid.
Second?
I second. I second.
Second. Roll call, please. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci? Yes, the motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Now, we're on to discussion items, the school year calendar, that's Beatrice and Melissa.
So, since our last meeting on May 4th, just to catch you up on a few things that happened, the sub-calendar committee met on May the 6th, which is the, the result is the draft that's in your packet, and also the Joint 20265 Calendar Committee met last Thursday. The calendar that we're presenting, we feel that it is very much aligned with District 202. Some of the things, just to point out, the start dates are not the exact same start dates. District 202, their students will be starting on August the 22nd in 2016, and we are proposing that District 65 students start on Wednesday, August the 24th in 2016. We were able to align the winter recess, the spring recess. Another change, in terms of two changes for our school calendar, one which Paula mentioned in her comments earlier, is the addition of Election Day as a holiday for November the 8th, 2016, and also, we are, the committee is recommending that Presidents' Day, that Monday, be used as a day of instruction if need be, if there are school closings due to inclement weather. We did try and follow up with some additional information based on the May 4th meeting. I don't know if you have any questions about that specifically that was outlined in the memo?
Questions?
Should we ask questions just about that, or?
Okay, we can finish and then move on.
Okay, so at this time, the Calendar Committee is presenting the 2016-2017 draft calendar for discussion.
Okay, questions? Candace?
Sure, I'll start. Let's see. First, just a couple clarifying questions. Beatrice, with regard to the start time and the alignment, you had said that there is a contractual issue with the bargaining unit. Can you explain what that issue is?
So, there's language in the collective bargaining agreement that states that if teachers are going to start prior to the, to August 20th, we would come together to try and resolve some issues. One of the issues that we've had is a timeliness of being able to pay teachers prior to, any earlier than a September 10th date. So, if they would start earlier, in terms of the payroll department and the systems that's in place, trying to make sure that teachers would not be working for too many weeks prior to receiving their first check. And that has been a challenge that during, we kind of discussed during the last round of negotiations, that we have not been able to resolve that issue. And then, the other concern that the teachers have brought forward on many different occasions is the heat in the buildings, so the temperature, and then, one other piece, which is in collective bargaining agreement, but that would also have to be resolved, is many of our facilities are used by summer camps over the summer, and we also have to make sure that the schools, which is collective bargaining agreement, are ready five days prior to teachers returning. So, there's another piece in terms of having the camps and other organizations that are using our facilities to make sure that their programs have ended and that the buildings are ready for use five days prior to teachers returning. So, for instance, if they, if they returned on the 18th of August, the same as E T H S, then we'd have to make sure that by August the 11th, the buildings would be ready, and depending on the buildings and the amount of work that has to be done, that could be challenging for those camps that are running a little bit later in the year as well. So, there's some facilities issues as well.
Okay. It's the, one question also about, well, this is more of a comment, so I'll hold that. What is the precedent, like, how long have we had aligned start dates? I don't know how far it goes back. I know we haven't in recent years. Do you have a feel for, you know, how much of a change this is relative to what our recent history is?
I'd have to check, so go back and look at, we do have past years' calendars, but I don't have that information right now.
Okay. I don't know, some folks might have, for as long as I've been paying attention, we've been aligned on start dates.
Fifteen years, I know.
Okay, okay. So, it is a pretty, I just don't want us to underestimate the significance, although it is two days, the significance of that departure.
It could very well be, I know it's been since I started in the district, but it could be something that we've never done differently.
Okay.
I don't have any memory of it ever being different.
And then, then this really goes into more comments, but the, the week in November, when we have, you know, the first week of November, we have a half-day for school improvement. The second week of November, the election day, we would have off Tuesday, and then we have off Friday for Veterans Day. I have a real concern about that. Yeah, I went back and I just kind of looked at some census data. Seventy-three percent of Evanston families have dual-working parents, families that have children under the age of 18. We don't have that data necessarily on our registrants, but I think you can extrapolate if you think, you know, in Evanston. And I think it's a real problem that we, we would have, right before Thanksgiving, expect that families, all families, are going to be able to accommodate both a half-day and then two, two days within the same week, and make alternative arrangements for students. I don't, I don't know if Veterans Day can be back on the table. I understand some of the security concerns that, I know we've, I guess I, I don't know what precautions we have in place for safety around Election Day, and I know that we have had, obviously, voting in our schools previous to this. So, I'm not trying to espouse what the answer would be, but I think it's an issue, and, you know, are there some other alternatives? So, that's a big concern for me. And I am concerned about the alignment, even though it is two days, because it is, it is a significant departure. I was, I appreciate the asking the question, because I think I'm the one that brought it up about asking the high school if they had, were motivated to move even earlier, because to me, that, when you look at the survey data of both schools, you know, a majority of parents, or majority of respondents to the surveys would support aligning on the 4th Monday. When you look at, 56% said it was very important to align. I think we do have some data around that alignment is important, and if the high school doesn't have any stated plans right now, which from your, from asking them, they said they did not specifically have plans on moving earlier, then I feel like, as a, in our efforts to be more collaborative, that maintaining that alignment, if we aren't forced to go even earlier, maintaining it the 4th Monday makes sense, so.
Yeah, this is actually a question for you, Candace. Are you equally concerned about other days that we have off that working parents might not have off?
Well, I-
Or just in particular, the November days that concern you? Because there's three days off in October, there are three days off in February?
Yeah, I think in looking at the, at the surveys and concerns about the religious holidays and still maintaining that, while those three days in October- and still maintaining that, while those three days in October are there, I, I don't see, I think that the majority of people have, have said that, and that is a, they want to maintain it. So generally, yes, I'm concerned about dates for working parents, but of course there are going to be times when we have to have, when we are going to have time off. I just think that putting three days in two weeks and then having another three days at the end of the month, and we're adding that, you know, we're adding a day, this calendar, those other dates have been on the calendar previously, we're adding a date that, that, so taking, making additional non-instructional days, you know, is a concern. So I don't have huge concerns about the other days.
Which, which day are we adding?
So we're adding the election day.
Election. Oh, Election Day.
So.
I think the security concerns are real, because Haven was a polling place, and you go to extraordinary measures to try and keep the polling very, very separate from the students.
And I understand that some schools may be different, others. That's why I said, I don't, I'm not necessarily saying that we, we not add the Election Day. Can we look at Veterans, I, I just think, can we look at the half-day? Can we have professional development on the Election Day? If we're not going to have school, have professional development in a, you know, in a smaller number of schools that are better maintained. I'm just thinking creatively about how you can further add some instructional time there. That was, I just poached it.
Can I ask a question about the security? Have we had any incidents on, on Election Days, or have we heard reports of other school districts where it's been a problem?
I have not heard any reports for District 65 of any incidents. I do know that DEC has expressed their own concerns in terms of teachers saying, expressing concerns over their safety and the safety of students. I am not aware of any particular incidents that have been reported due to the polling in District 65 facilities. And in terms of other schools, I, I do not know of concerns either, but I, there are many districts that are closed on Election Day, or they use it as a professional development day for teachers.
I think Candace makes a good point. That's a, that would be a consolidation of opportunities if you.
So we're moving. It was her idea.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
It was actually an idea from State Board of Education. I think they're the ones that should be used.
Yes, well, they're doing.
They should be used as professional development. So I would definitely like to see us, I mean, I would like to see us consider not taking the day off, especially if we haven't actually had issues in the past. And, you know, to the extent that there are specific concerns that staff has, perhaps we can address those. But if that is not possible, then a minimum of taking that, that half-day on the 2nd and trying to do professional development back, so the 2nd at least is maintained as a full day. And again, I would, just, 202 isn't a poll, the high school isn't a polling place, so they don't, they're not taking that. So that's just another kind of reason to keep it as an instructional day, but all possible to maintain alignment, especially as the reason we don't want to have Veterans Day be an instructional day to maintain alignment with 202, which is, I think, what I remember from our last conversation.
Any other thoughts on that particular week, or other, or general comments?
I think a related point to that would be to go back to 202 and understand if there's any compromise on Veterans Day. Why is it off the table, you know, from their vantage point? I mean, I think we can honor veterans with our students in, in classrooms as well as having attendance.
Probably in some really effective ways.
In more effective ways, of actually using it as an opportunity. So, so that would be, you know, a related, related question.
Beatrice?
So I do have a few comments. The first is, I know we talked a couple weeks ago, or whenever we last had this, we were wondering about the number of full weeks of school. And I think one of the questions we had was, is there any indication of if a full week of, a five-day week of school is better than some of the shorter weeks we have? And I just, doing some math, it looks like before December, the proposed calendar would have eight five-day weeks of school, and throughout the school year, it's 20. And that's out of 42 weeks of school that we have, I believe. It might be off by a week, but, you know, so it's, it's not, it's a low number. So did we learn anything more about what might be the best practice out there?
You know what? We did not have an opportunity to do additional research on that.
Personally, that would be something I would be really interested to see. I know we're putting this out there as a draft calendar, and next year it would receive final approval, but I think that's important for us to understand if there's any model that's better for students. And in that regard, I think one of the areas we can look at are, you know, these, the professional development model. You know, we've got seven days that are half-days, six of them, those are the, if we, if that were to change in any way, six of those weeks could become, you know, full attendance weeks. So that's just a possibility. The other thing I'm wondering about is the winter break. Looks like we go up through December 23rd. And I know one of the things that's been raised by a lot of people is making sure that we actually have attendance by students and staff, and I think we might put ourselves at risk for having attendance on that date if we're having school as late as the 23rd. Was that raised or discussed as an issue?
I don't, I don't know if it was raised by the boards an issue. We did look at the student attendance for the past three years, just prior to going on winter recess, and we did not note a significant decrease in student attendance, while there was some, because I think probably on average, I don't know if our student attendance is somewhere around 95, 96%. And in some cases, and we look by school, but also across the district, and it was still like 92, 91%.
I'm not doubting current state, but I think we've also gotten out earlier. We haven't gone through the 23rd. So that's the point I'm trying to make, is by going up until the 23rd, I think it's pretty predictable that attendance is more likely to decline. A lot of people will be wanting to, to travel for that holiday.
There, there are many families that celebrate Christmas on Christmas Eve, and to get anywhere, you'd have to take the 23rd off.
We'd have, we'd have to extend the year then.
I mean, that's one option, or find a date somewhere else.
But then, is the high school willing? I mean, we're talking about alignment, and if they're trying to move towards.
Yeah.
Kind of how things end up.
But I, I know one of our drivers, at least, I've always experienced that one of our drivers is, what's the attendance going to be? And when I look at that, I am not an expert, but I think there will be lower attendance on that date. So I think it's something we have to consider before this becomes final. I'm also wondering about the mid-week start and end for the year, and I'm wondering if we had conversations with any of the providers of either daycare or camps, or some of the options that families would have. You know, starting mid-week might be a little bit different than what they've managed in the past. And I know camps tend to run, you know, for a full week, and that would be a great option for families still, but I'm, I don't know. Did we have input from those providers to see, would they be willing to provide something that's, you know, three days instead of a full week? Because we would have that, we'd have two days potentially in August, because it's sort of a partial week there, and then three days in June, because of those mid-week start and end.
We can certainly reach out to the organizations and the park districts to see what would be available. I do know that sometimes over certain breaks, like winter recess or spring recess, they offer certain camps the kids can attend, even if they don't attend for the full week. So we can see if there are other actions available.
But those are usually full week, like, spring break's usually a full week, and we usually have two full winter break weeks, right? So I think that's, that makes sense to me, but I'm just, these half weeks are the ones I'm wondering about.
Right. We can reach out to them and see if they're willing to do something to accommodate, just to see what, what possibilities are.
I think that would be important, as we're, you know, trying to make sure that there, I realize that wouldn't cover all families by any means, but it certainly would alleviate pressure for some families. The other thing I, I do wonder about, and I think I was more persuaded in some of the conversation about temperature, just looking that we would be ending as early as June 6th, and that the buildings have been sitting over the summer. And I do wonder if, and I missed something, I'm sure, so I apologize for this. The start date for 202, for the 2016-17 calendars, on what date?
So the teachers would return on the 18th of 2016, and the students would return on the 22nd.
So I, I do wonder, you know, would it be better, keeping in mind the temperature factor, do we need to start on the 24th, or do we shift those three days, build out those full weeks? So we start on the 29th, and then maybe end on the 9th. So it's the same amount of days, it's a shift of three days, and it gives us full weeks off or full weeks on, which I just feel like is easier for families to manage logistically. There might be a reason that you opted not to do that.
I think it would be the alignment. We were trying to start closer to the time of ETHS, so that's why we started the mid-week. But it has a good point, that if you have to find, it might be easier to find childcare covered for a full week rather than just a two-day.
I mean, I get what you're saying, and there's probably not a right answer, but there might be a better answer. And I'm not sure what that is, but I think it's something we have to look at with what's been proposed.
I, I think alignment is a lot of a goal, but I also think we need to keep in mind that we have different needs. As the high school has a need or desire to get final exams done before winter break, we have a problem of a parent population who has to find daycare for children if they're not in school. And that's a very real, impressive problem.
It's an interesting idea to at least consider the fifth Monday of August. I do remind, want to remind us about snow and cold emergencies, and that, you know, trying to avoid those and trying to, as we think about having early starts and all sorts of ways to avoid the closing of school during the winter months, but, you know, where we would fill in the blanks and how much we would leak into that week of June 12th is a, is a question.
So you're, you're just saying that if we did have to close school during the winter, then we would bleed into that following week potentially?
Potentially, potentially.
We also, if we are basing it on childcare to change the start dates, one of the reasons not to disrupt the alignment is because of older children taking care of younger siblings. And that would be an entire week, that these kids would be unsupervised if they don't have other.
For whatever percentage of overlap we have, which is a maximum of 25%, is that what I think we saw?
I think it's the high end, but on, in the survey, it was around 20, in 19 or 20. So I think you also, I mean, not even for the sibling care, but you also have, a lot of families take vacations near the, in August. And if you do have children in both districts, and there's a, if there's two days, I mean, I object to the two days, but if there's two days, you're likely going to come back for that Monday anyway. But if it's a whole week different, then, you know, you've got one child that has to be back a week before, you have one child a week later, and that is a scheduling concern. Again, we don't, you know, we don't have the real date on what that is, but 20% is a significant volume of students, if it mirrors what the survey data is.
Any other thoughts?
So I'll say, so thank you guys for putting the start date from similar districts. I know we talked about it. It's good to see it. I will just say I was surprised that so many districts start Fridays and when, you know, there, I thought, like Richard, everyone started Monday as well, so it's good to see that. To Paula's question about President's Day, and I guess my, my question is, Paula, are you, can I engage her? Are you asking that President's Day, are you suggesting that we just take it off and we use the five emergency days at the end of the year? Or are you suggesting that we possibly indicate another day to be an emergency day?
So I'm, I'm just saying that keep it as President's Day is day off, is day off, and use the emergency days at the end of the year. So don't use it as emergency day.
And I guess my question then would be, how many emergent, like, what's our average use of emergency days that we ever went?
Yes.
All the way?
It's just so much. We haven't used them in years.
Four over the last two years, and then prior to that, we'd gone years without emergency days.
And even if, even if we had an emergency closing day, we wouldn't necessarily have to use President's Day to make it up, or is it first come?
No.
First.
We wouldn't have to use it, as, just as an example, the high school also takes it as an emergency day, but because of when the, the last day of school was closed, it fell so close to the President's Day, they didn't use it. And we were suggesting that we would do something similar. So, you know, we would want people to have at least, you know, a month's notice of whether or not that was going to be taken as a day. But we wouldn't know when the snow was coming. Exactly. I mean, we don't, we don't know. We can't predict.
Just saying.
Within that window. Within that window, right. President's Day. They don't use it if it's in the next four weeks. So for instance, yeah, if the, how, if the snow emergency fell somewhere, you know, the last maybe two weeks of January, or the last week of January, we wouldn't then elect to use President's Day, just in terms of being able to notify people in a timely manner.
Okay. Any other? Because it sounds like we have a couple issues. Jennifer, did you?
I, I think most of my thoughts have already been expressed. I, I share a concern about our first, you know, constituency of students and what's the right thing for them, and thinking about the number of working parents that we have in the district. So I don't need to repeat questions. I agree with the conversation.
I just have one comment to go back to the concern about the winter holiday. And I guess, just to express my little bit, the discomfort of letting religious holidays drive some of the decision. I would like to see us pull away from having religious holidays as, as non-instructional days, and so to then factor that again into the discussion is not something that I would think would be ideal. So just my comment on that.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I just have a, this is more of a future point rather than a specific one for this calendar year. As we've talked in the strategic plan about professional learning and professional development, and how to align that across the district, and then try to think about how to be parallel with the high school, one of the suggestions that has come to the table is, should we consider Mondays, letting kids out early on Mondays in a parallel sense to the way the high school does, to be able to coordinate professional learning across our district and just coordinate with the high school. We did, we did not include that in here. We want to look at that in a little bit more, more analytic way, but it's something that we want to consider about how we actually do the type of professional learning that we want to do, and can it be coordinated with the high school.
So we would consider, even if we approved this draft calendar, we would assume that the professional learning proposal would affect this year, right? This is 16-17.
So right now, actually, we're, we're sticking with the Wednesdays on this, and we thought that if we were going to move forward, it would be the following.
It would be the following year. Oh, okay. I thought it would not be next year, but it would be 16-17.
You know, I would just. I'm sorry. That, I, I have a, I guess, strong viewpoint on that. And I just wonder, with the high school, those kids, generally speaking, can independently get home and, you know, take care of themselves as a 14-year-old and, and older. And the children, you know, K4 or 5, I don't, you know, depending on what age you start leaving your child at home alone, for the 75% of the families or so that have two working parents, having to come up with something for every Monday would be significant. Now, there's some small subset of that that would have high school students, but we know it would be the majority of families that would need to find care every Monday. I think that's a really significant burden.
Although if it's only an hour, it might mean that the childcare, the arrangements that are in place for 3:30 would be up to 2:30 on a weekly basis. Not that, I mean, if you had certain activities or.
So, but Rhodes ends at 2:45, and I think King Arts does too.
And this is why we didn't.
So that's a 1:45, and, and I, I just have to say, in addition to. and I just have to say, in addition to really thinking about what it means for smaller, you know, younger-aged students, I also have a question of, can you perform at the highest level of quality delivering professional development on a weekly basis?
And this is why we have, we're not proposing it, because what we want to do is actually look at models around the country, we want to look at how this might be done, we might want to think about what the frequency would be, but we want to introduce that as an idea, and again, there are, as I hear, a lot of concerns about the Wednesdays as well, and so, what's the most efficient way of doing the type of scheduling, so that we can have fantastic professional learning, and have the least amount of burden to families and kids, and so, and that's why, that's not part of this, this proposed piece, and it would potentially be the following year, depending on what we find.
All right. So, what I have heard is, we, there's some concerns about the two weeks before Thanksgiving, the three days, two and a half days off there, there's some concern, it sounds like several board members are, have some difficulty with the lack of alignment, and others think that maybe a whole week would be better, and, and then the, there's some worry about the Christmas break ending too, too close to Christmas, beginning too close to Christmas, so, at this point, it sounds like we need to get a little bit more clarity or comfort with some of the decisions we're about to make, or, I think that is what I'm hearing. Would you all agree with me on that?
Yes, and I would add just some of the, understanding the best practice around...
The five-day?
Yeah, the five-day week.
So, maybe we could bring this back, when does it need to be approved? Okay, by the end of the year, so we could do it in August, if we wanted to look at it over the summer, do some...
I was going to say, I don't think this technically has to be approved yet, the 15-16 calendar, we needed to have approved, so that we can enter that prior to leaving for this school year, I think it's just been, I understand, just our board's practice to have a draft another year out.
Yeah. Because parents want a plan for those start dates, and breaks, so it sounds like, if we could do it before the beginning of the school year, that would be helpful, so we should bring it back in August, I think, unless, because I think June is too soon.
If the high school approved theirs for 16-17?
The high school has been holding off, I believe, until we were bringing ours to the board, so I'll have to check with Mr. Vernon Clark to see when his was going, I do know that, that it has not been approved, well, as of last Thursday, when we met, it had not been approved.
Okay, thank you, this is, this is a sticky issue, but we've made some progress. Now, we're onto the social-emotional program update, Joyce?
Yeah, well, I want to invite the staff that we have here, sitting over there, to talk about some of our social-emotional learning programs tonight. We've been, we've had social-emotional learning programs in the district for, well, we started PBIS about 14, 15 years ago, and we have been doing social-emotional learning programs like Second Step for about eight years. With our work in the strategic plan, we're greatly expanding our work up to this point in time, largely, our social-emotional learning programs have been implemented by many of our social workers and psychologists in the district. What we hope to do is to really embed these programs within our curriculum next year, and, and expanding from there on. So, tonight, we have a variety of people here, who, you know, I'm going to let them introduce themselves when they come up to talk about the social-emotional learning stuff. Susan Colian is also going to talk about restorative justice, which we've only had for one year, but to kick it off, we have Dr. Goran, who's going to talk a little bit about social-emotional learning, and Castle.
So, I'm, I'm going to speak very briefly, because you all are the great experts who are on the ground doing some fantastic work, I want to underscore what Joyce said, when we did the strategic plan, it was actually quite remarkable to see through the surveys, through the commentaries, through the push that we, that we received from a broad base of community members and staff, and faculty, the importance of both academic growth and social-emotional growth, healthy development and healthy academic growth, and how do we actually do the two? And what our colleagues and friends will talk about is, a lot about how we do this embedded inside the curriculum, so it's part of the teaching and learning process, that's part of a routine of a teacher's day, and a young person's day, and added on to the curriculum as a potential specialized program, and that, when we combine the two, and we pay attention to the developmental processes that kids are going through, and that, when we honor the fact that the social-emotional skills that we'll talk about are teachable skills, these are things that can be taught to young people as they enter into kindergarten all the way through eighth grade, and then beyond into high school as well. So, the, what I'm excited about is to hear from our colleagues about the work that we do within the routine of the classroom, the work that we do in creating a culture and a climate where children are learning these skills and practicing them, and learning how to both behave well and interact well, and really be on a pathway to being good citizens and good colleagues and good friends. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to our buddies.
Good evening, I'm Annie Friedman, I'm the district's PBIS external coach, and have been doing that for the 16 years that we've been doing that in the district, and I believe that I'm going first, because the PBIS school-wide teams, the tier-one teams, sometimes they're called green teams, in the schools are really the conduit for the social-emotional learning that takes place, that's where the planning and the evaluation occurs, in the buildings in our district. First and foremost, I think the most important message about PBIS is that it is our behavioral response to intervention model, and it is something that is a problem-solving model that requires us to look at data, look at anecdotal information, and then action plan and evaluate, so it's kind of moved us into a more thoughtful and programmatic way of looking at behavior and climate, and in that regard, social-emotional learning. In terms of where we are with PBIS, the, over the last two years, we have increased manyfold in terms of schools that are implementing at the highest level, the highest standard for PBIS of Illinois, now called the Midwest PBIS Network, and I want to point out that, you know, the increase from last year to this is significant, but all of our other schools are implementing at, it was, they've changed the name over the years, but at a basic level, they have the basic elements, but we have schools that are achieving at like a real, really high level, it's very unusual. Just a little quick data in terms of, you know, the, how well we are implementing, this is basically a summary of staff survey data, every year, all of our schools, all the staff in the buildings take staff surveys, in terms of basic best practices, they're, all the questions are not just PBIS, they're just, you know, how do we run our school, do you know the rules, do the kids know the rule, things along those lines, the baseline year goes back from 15 and 16 years ago, because some schools started at a different time, and you can see that way back, way back when, in 2011, 12, I mean, the schools as a whole went up significantly, and I put in the most recent data from this year to show that we are maintaining. Again, these are teachers who felt, you can answer these questions as on a, on a three-point scale, and these are teachers that felt that these items were fully in place, so, yes, 67% of the items were fully in place, but also, there were many of the items that were considered partially in place, and that was for school-wide systems, with such things as social-emotional learning, this is for individual student systems, this is like the tier-two, three practices, this is for those students who need targeted interventions and intensive-level interventions, and again, this was, this is very significant, yes, those numbers under 2011, 12, and 1450 are lower than the school-wide system, but these for national norms, that these are, these are significantly higher, and again, we are maintaining where we've been at. So, probably the most important message is that teachers are feeling better about where we as a school are at with these basic, big best practices. So, in terms of impact over the years, we've seen significant impact on suspensions, both the number of students being suspended, and the, the number of students who are suspended more than once, and that really speaks to the incredible work being done by all three, all three tiers, but in particular, our tier-two, three teams, and that last data point in 2009, 2010, where we had a great jump, is the years, like those two years prior, where we as a district really pushed on having our tier-two, three teams put some interventions into place, some things that we can go into greater depth another time, but some very specific interventions that again are data-driven, and where we are identifying kids earlier, identifying how well they are doing or not doing, and then modifying plans and moving them up the support ladder, so to speak, as time goes by. This is our SWIST, that, our School-Wide Information System, really, the most important thing to look at here is, the national standard is, is that those top, those top two, yellow and red sections should be below a total of 15%, and as you can see, we've improved slightly since, since three years ago, and we are maintaining, and this is for the major ODRs, though, you know, the big, typically exclusionary-type disciplinary situations, things where administrator would typically need to be involved, and again, we are maintaining, in fact, have some slight improvements, there's still some schools that are making major strides, this next one is just a combination of both, that we will go past. In terms of what's coming in the future, and this comes out of the district's strategic plan and the Safe and Supportive Climate Committee, so, where we're seeing PBIS moving forward in the future, and particularly in terms of school-wide practices, is that the tier-one teams, the school-wide teams, are going to, in a more programmatic and more thoughtful way, address some of these things that have kind of been, you know, some schools do it more often than others, some schools do it in different ways, and work with, through a district-wide initiative, we're going to make sure that we are addressing and again evaluating social-emotional learning, restorative practices, classroom management, culture response, classrooms, and equity and discipline, and that last one in particular is, we have data, and schools have been doing a good job of looking at it, but now, what do we, what do we do with that data, and when we're seeing change, what, why is that change occurring, and let's share that information, share those practices across.
So, I'm going to talk about an overview of social-emotional learning, and then what we're doing in our elementary schools in District 65. So, these are the five major goals of social-emotional learning, to build self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. So, that comes associated with these five competencies, the first column is the different ways that you can teach social-emotional learning, so there's explicit social-emotional learning skill instruction, there's integration into the academic curriculum, and I obviously can't speak to that, because teachers do it every day through literacy, through, you know, all the different things that they do in classrooms, and that is not my area of expertise, but I know it goes on constantly throughout the day in the schools that I work in. The next is instructional practices, so different ways that we interact with children on a daily basis. So, the goals that we have are for them to acquire the high competency areas, being able to do those things, improve attitudes about self, others in schools, and then the outcomes that we see are positive social behavior, fewer conduct problems, less emotional distress in our children, and better academic success. So, in the elementary schools, we are using curriculums that are committed for children, they produce Talking About Touching, which is a personal safety curriculum, we use this consistently across all of our elementary schools, and the kindergarten here, we cover, this is for Aaron's Law, which is to teach children ways that they can keep themselves safe, and it's a sexual abuse prevention curriculum. We use Second Step, and Steps to Respect, which is a bullying prevention program. This is not, I just want to say, this is not used the same way in every school at this time, just so everyone is aware, speaking in general terms. We use social thinking curriculum, a lot of social workers and psychologists are working in conjunction with our speech pathologists, that we're working on this concept of social thinking, which is building awareness in children's social interactions, that we think about each other, we interact with each other, therefore, we have feelings about each other, so it's building those skills, and there's three curriculums that we use for that. We use Zones of Regulation, which is a curriculum designed to help children with self-regulation, identifying feelings and strategies that they can use for each of the zones that those feelings fall into. Some of the others are executive function curriculums that we use in the elementary schools, Stop, Walk, and Talk, which is bullying, Coping Cap, which is a cognitive behavioral therapy program for children who have anxiety, the PATHS program, which is being used in one of our schools in a modified way, where actually the teachers are teaching social-emotional instruction for nine weeks, and not asking for support from the social workers to do that. We use Skill Striving and Voice-Town, which are very specific social skill instruction programs.
Good evening, I'm Diana Salinas, I'm the school psychologist at Nichols Middle School, and I've been there now five years, and I've been with the district nine years, and I'm one of the bilingual school psychologists, so I've had the opportunity to work at several, if not most of the elementary and preschool, and then middle schools in the district. So, we're going to just describe briefly some of the social-emotional learning curriculum supports in the middle school. One is disability awareness, which happens in sixth grade during the advisory period, and the focus and purpose of those lessons are to really talk about differences in learning, and how we may all need different things for learning, with a focus on really respecting and accepting all differences. Some of the tools that are used for that are TED Talks, videos, discussions, and some activities also. Second Step, similar, there's also a middle school component to that, Jen described a little bit of the elementary school, and that's a violence prevention program, and it can be used classroom-wide, I think, because of the structure of the middle school, it's more typically used as a tier-two or small group intervention, but it's a temporary group, it's for six to eight weeks, there's a pre- and post-test, so that helps us assess the effectiveness of the program, and the curriculum has several lessons, so we basically try to pull lessons from the curriculum in order to address the needs of specific groups, and there's videos that, you know, teach students how to recognize and approach problems, and really how to understand others' feelings and build empathy. Social-academic instructional groups are really based on need, so basically, when there's any evidence that a student is struggling, and may benefit from some more targeted interventions, some of that is school data is what we use for the referrals, office discipline referrals, truancy, grades, also, there are referrals from parent, teacher, and staff, particularly for students who may be internalizing behavior, so they're not always identified through the school data, so we try to, you know, also respect and honor, and look at those referrals from parent, teachers, and staff. It's a short-term intervention, four to eight weeks, and it's a pre- and post-test also. Some examples of the targeted behaviors, building self-esteem, social skills training, coping skills for anxiety, anger management, and some self-advocacy, and the resources vary, I think most of us will pull from a variety of resources, including videos, you know, curriculums, websites, books, and then we just tailor that for the needs and interests of the groups that we're working with, you know, for example, this year I used the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens with a group that I'm currently working with. Executive Function Groups, we use a curriculum from the Rush New Behavioral Center, and it has lessons and activities, and it has student handouts also, and just a brief description or definition of executive function, it's, you know, the processes in the frontal lobe of the brain that really allow us to plan and organize, problem-solve, use our judgment, evaluate some of our decisions, and, you know, these are, this is something that's developing in all students, really, so students benefit from when there's structures and systems in the classrooms, and I think teachers do a lot of things, and put a lot of things in place to support that, but when students, some students struggle, and continue to struggle despite those systems being in place, they are often referred to participate in this group, and the referrals come from parents, teachers, and staff, particularly, you know, students who are missing assignments, who are losing the materials, or the students whose things are falling out of their locker... are falling out of their locker, and their backpack's overflowing, and, you know, they don't use their planner. So those are some of the behaviors, you know, that we usually get referrals of, and often students that struggle with those things also, their grades are impacted, so that we use that sometimes to drive referrals also as data. So it's a small group intervention, also short-term, four to eight weeks, and there's a pre- and post-test for the students as well as for the teachers.
Good evening, I'm Susan Simeas, I'm a social worker at Haven Middle School. I've been there for five years. I'm going to talk a little bit about some tier one and voluntary interventions. First of all, we have Girls on the Run, it's more of a voluntary program. I was fortunate and have been a coach for the past five years. I'm very passionate about running, healthy living. This is my group this year, we had amazing volunteers, parents, and a couple marathon runners who helped us and inspired our girls to actually want to run half marathons and marathons when they get to high school, said, "Let's do it." Girls on the Run is a voluntary program for grades three through five and six through eight. It's short-term, 12 weeks, it promotes healthy living, fitness, and builds confidence. It also has a 5K at the end of the program, which it's not about how fast you finish, it's about finishing and carrying everyone to the finish line. This is something that I know, as I've been in the district, more and more schools have developed a program for, and are getting involved, which has been really great. They just had a 5K for their spring season on Sunday, so, which was really great. Project Snowflake, also something that is voluntary, but is open to all of our senior grade graders across the district, and it's hosted and organized by Pierce Series in conjunction, conjunction with our District 65 social workers and students. We hosted this at Haven Middle School, which was really great. They pick students who had previously attended Snowflake, and they serve as a committee to plan it and really execute and think about the shirt design, the theme of the overall program. This year was Your Choice, Your Future, which was really great. They had some theater productions, and they had parents volunteer and get up on stage and really do some role-playing of decision-making and resisting pressures and how you can effectively communicate with your teams, and it was really great. One of the tier one interventions that we offer in our middle schools is called Sixth Grade Advisory, and it's a building-wide, it's where building-wide interventions take place, such as Erica's Life House and our anti-bullying, which are facilitated by our social workers. And a couple of our schools are part of it, Northwestern Athletes, we were lucky enough to have in cross players, football players, to really help us with a lesson on facilitating what it is to be a responsible citizen and, you know, speaking up for others and, you know, celebrating differences. They work on team-building activities, stress and time management skills, disability awareness, decision-making, a lot of executive functioning happens there, goal-setting, organization, locker cleanouts, you name it, it happens during your advisory time. One of their other programs is Erica's Life House, which is a two to three, two to three-day presentation done through advisory typically done in spring, which is wrapped ours up, actually, and it's conducted to develop self-awareness, to depression, self-management, decision-making, and when it comes to the manners of seeking help for yourself or intervening with others, we'd be really surprised at the amount of students who actually come to our offices after these presentations and say, "Hey, I have a friend, perhaps someone they could be talking about themselves, who needs some help, what do you advise?" And it's just a really great learning. Yeah, me too. It's a really great learning experience. And according to Erica's Life House, reduces stigma, encourages early intervention, and promotes early identification. The students that come into our offices, I am very happy with the elementary schools because you can tell that the conversations are happening earlier and earlier, which is really, really great. We also do our anti-bullying, which is done during the fall. We try to do about four to five lessons. Once again, our Northwestern athletes come in and help us with that, Project Roar. The objective is to help students learn about the difference between gossip, inappropriate remarks, the difference between being a dissigator, a bystander, and cyberbullying. And we really do take away the stop-walk and walk-away approach that they're teaching the elementary students. Sometimes really get to the middle of school, they're like, "I'm going to put my hand up," but you'd be amazed that that's a universal signal, and it helps us realize that there may be something going on. So those are some of our tier one interventions that we do. Another one is Project Alert, which is done for our PE classes for seventh and eighth graders, and it helps on identifying existing pressures of drug use. Twelve of our seventh graders and our eighth graders receive three booster lessons where they really focus on practicing those internal and external pressures of drug use and benefits of resisting the drugs. They really work with their parents to do interviews, and it's a great curriculum.
So talk a little bit about cyber safety. Hello, I'm Alina Nicolapulu, I'm the psychologist at Haven, and I've been in District 65 middle schools for almost two decades now. And I think my colleagues have covered pretty much the programs we have in middle school, but I wanted to show you a new one because I want to highlight the beauty of social emotional learning. Because what happens is the kids let us know that we need to add some. And so it's a program that we've developed, it's done in a few schools where the psychologist and the librarian give this series of lessons. We start in the fall and we go all the way through the spring, where we teach them how to be smart, safe, and ethical, we actually teach them what the word means, digital citizens. But I want you to think of this, what are the tasks for teenagers? Eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, nineteen, teenagers are younger and younger. They have to do, the tasks are the same. They're the same that they were in the generation before, the same that they were when I was a kid and when you were kids. They have to do with self-control, with identity, with attraction, with aggression, with executive function, how do you plan? So all of that are tasks as the kids are growing up. Now, it's those tasks online. And so what we did is we developed these, this curriculum, which has become bigger and bigger every year because the kids have told us in essence that they need to talk about this. By the time we got to Lesson Three, I just put a little, no, but what I wanted to tell you is we asked them to give us their questions. So Lesson Three, which was in March, was what, what do you want to know? We were just, we did Google, you know, where they put questions on Google that. We just couldn't believe the depth and sophistication of their questions, what they want to know, you know, "What do I do when I'm in improved test and someone else is mean? But I'm in the test, so what do I do?" Or they wanted to know, oh, this was my favorite part, about how much TV they watched. They were like, "Do you need to take my phone? We need a warrant." We're like, "No, we don't need a warrant." Exactly, if someone is being hurt. Really deep questions about what happens when I make a mistake online, where do I go for help, and how do I, you know, what are the consequences to that? So I think it's interesting, it's like, social emotional learning, it's alive, so it morphs into what they need. This is just one new thing we've added.
Good evening, my name is Susan Colian. I'm kind of new on the block, I'm a new kid on the block. I was an assistant principal at Washington Elementary, and I worked for Chicago Public Schools for over 15 years. As a teacher, as a classroom teacher, I also worked in professional development and school reform, so I was hired part-time this year to help with the Restorative Justice Project. Our journey began this year right here in the classroom. This is an example of a circle in a classroom in Lima, Peru, of all places, where they're doing restorative justice. As you can see, there's a restorative justice coordinator, she's the one in the pink, and the teacher, and the guidelines in the circle in the classroom is that the facilitator asks a question, and then the question is posed, and then each child responds to the question. There's a talking piece, and the talking piece is passed through the circle, and every time they get the talking piece, they hold it, and they get to speak and no one else interrupts. So it's really a practice in listening with intent. The circles promote all sorts of pro-social skills, they're restorative by nature, and kids are learning to respect each other, as they're learning to listen, and they're learning from each other, learning about each other, and the goal really is to develop the classroom community. So that's where we began this year, focusing on the classroom. Just to give you a little context for this year, the heart of our work this year has really been this partnership with the Evanston Police Department. They have used restorative practices now for eight years and working with nonviolent youth offenders in the community, some of you might know already, and they use restorative justice practices with the circle format, and they bring the two together. A big component of their work is training community volunteers, so they have over the years trained, probably maybe 40 altogether, 20 to 30 here because that's part of our project, but that's a big component of what they do. And that's carried over to the work that we've done here in the district. It's really been a model of co-development and implementation, and I say that and I stress that because it's really a big part of what we do as well, in that it's the Evanston Police Department, it's the district staff, it's the school administration, the teachers and students, and parents, and the community volunteers have really come together and made this happen this year. So I'd like to acknowledge everybody, there were a lot of community volunteers over the audience tonight and a teacher that's here too. So with that said, we focus on the sharing circles this year, we'll move forward, and then I'll speak a little bit more about the details of that. In our training model that we've developed, begins with a training upfront for about two to three hours, depending on the school's schedule. Then we match each classroom teacher with a community volunteer, and that community volunteer works with the teacher for a 10-year, uh, 10, it's a 10-week period, once a week. We have a staff check-in circle after that, and we model circle for teachers, and we check in, how's it going, what are the challenges, how can we support you? And then we built in an assessment and refine, refine that process and that, where we're always getting feedback from the participants in order to refine what we're doing. So what we've accomplished in this year with this model is that we've been working with five elementary schools. The majority of the teachers in each of those schools are doing sharing circles once a week for about 20 to 40 minutes across all grades, and all instructional studies, that's the general program with classroom students with high needs, special needs, and bilingual classrooms is self-studying in the ACC program. We've trained up to 98 staff, the majority being teachers, some support staff in the school, and the administration. We've had six teacher trainings and 14 staff check-in circles. We also developed a 10-week circle guide for K through two, V through five, which was a big development in our work because this was based on teachers' feedback, they needed a little more structure out of the volunteer left, so the teachers are using those now and some of the volunteers are quite, very, very helpful. And they cover those restorative justice values and the skills that we're trying to promote. Also, part of the model is assigning a restorative justice school coordinator, and these people have sort of just risen to the occasion in these five schools, they're the social worker, assistant principal, and they're really a vital link to the school. They're helping to coordinate, communicate with the staff at days, make sure the needs are set and in all place for the work for the special year. Again, we developed a student assessment piece and a feedback tool, which is really important, giving teachers feedback, how's it going, how's the support, and then using again that information to refine what we're doing. The PTA has been involved as well, that was a natural development. They were curious, they wanted to know more about what we're doing, so we've had some parent circles, which have been pretty, pretty interesting, phenomenal, parents have experienced the circle format, and you know, generally a lot of feedback also from them. We are going to have our first annual restorative retreat, which will happen June 18th, and community volunteers and teachers and staff are going to come together and talk about what we've learned and build up that as an evaluation for further guides and strategies of what we're doing. I'm not going to go into depth of this because I know there's not a lot of time, but this is what we call the restorative school practices continuum. This is sort of what we're aiming for comprehensively, it goes beyond a disciplinary approach to restorative justice. It was developed by the International Institute of Restorative Practices, which is a leading organization worldwide now in restorative practices. So they, they know their stuff, they've been doing it for years, working in both traditional public school studies as well as alternative school studies. So they've made these distinctions in the restorative practices that we're following. But basically, it was starting with the sharing circles, as we talked about in the beginning, moving to responsive circles, which go a little bit deeper, responding to issues and problems in the classroom, and group setting, and then the advanced restorative practices, which include peacemaking circles in terms of advocacy that deal with the most serious instances in school as disciplinary and intervention measures. This is our five-year plan. We're thinking of training the schools in two-year phase, year one, again, level one, we're calling sharing circles with an extension, sharing circles, they have to check in and check out, and we're going to do that, and using them to process content, and I'm using them into some JECO as I'm teaching the tool. And then in year two, moving into responsive circles, where I'm a little deeper with the staff, and that, and the advanced restorative practices. In August, we want to bring school teams from each of the participating schools together for our one-day training in advanced restorative practices. It'll give those teams a chance to work together as well. There'll probably be three or four representatives from each school in that training. So as you see, Lincoln, Oakton, Washington, and Dewey and Orienton have been involved this year, will continue next year with your two-month training. We'll have King League, Kingsley, Dawes, and King Arts starting next, this year, next year, two-year in fall, and they'll continue for the second year in 2006 and 2007, and we'll continue with adding three or four schools this year. Writing down the basic premises for what we're doing just seemed important to me because it really is about a paradigm shift, it's about a philosophy more than like what we're doing and what we're accomplishing, because this is really where the transformation takes place. It is really about that mindset and always talking about it, the people that we're working with, everybody involved. But basically, we believe that school reform is most effective when it takes place from the inside out, that is targeting the general core of the school, supporting the classroom, community strengthening that community authority in the capacity of those teachers and staff and working out in that way, and that, that means it's more sustainability with their engagement and the process. We're also promoting a whole-school approach in that it's not just one component of restorative justice, but we're trying to take into account all the possibilities and take it step by step, and that coherency amongst all school community members is really important to involve transformation in schools. It's a common language in the way of thinking and approaching issues with children and the staff in general in schools. We believe that learning and social emotional development takes place best in relationships. All children are whole and complete and have the ability to participate in circles successfully in restorative practices, and we're winding that. It's about equity, it's about inclusion, we have lots of examples. So part of this year, the children of all backgrounds are participating, and they're actually doing a good job. This, the premise after this one is really from the International Institute of Restorative Justice. They believe that people are happier and more likely to make positive changes when those of them already do things with them rather than to them or for them. And that's really, that's the heart of restorative justice, it's providing the accountability, the support. And I would say that goes for children as well as adults, when they're looking, when they're trying to figure out changes in schools. And when schools address issues in this restorative ways, students feel less elimination. And when schools address issues in this restorative ways, students feel less elimination and shame and will innovation to do better and actually learn from the process. So that's where we're at this year.
So I really want to thank the staff who spent time planning for this and have really showed us their passion about their work and some of the things that we have going on in terms of social-emotional learning. And this is, you know, part of kind of as you think about the strategic plan and where we're going and what we want to continue to expand on. Do you have any questions?
Sure we do. That was a very, very informative presentation. There was a lot of inclination. Thank you. Pass it over to the board now. Questions? Jennifer?
Judge Ben. I don't have any order, I was writing them as you were going. Thank you, that was a terrific presentation and very helpful. And part of my mind as you were presenting was thinking about ongoing parent education of all of the things that you're doing here so that parents can also celebrate all of the things that you've just shared with us. I know that there was a presentation done in coordination with the district PTA recently but trying to think about ways to continue and to let parents know what's happening. I had a couple of questions on the PBIS side about what does platinum actually mean? Like what, is there information that maybe I don't, I should have seen before, but I don't know what that means? And then thinking about consistency across the district, about how it's being implemented and sort of raising the best practices and figuring out how to have them systemically train, you know, share it across the district. And then there's a question that I think is an intersection between CEL and PBIS for me, and that is the difference between intrinsic and extrinsic motivation and how that's being, you know, how we're trying to teach children the difference between those two things and what that means in terms of both emotional and academic outcomes.
If you want me to, it's off.
Andy, if you want to talk about what platinum is first.
Thank you Joyce. There's four levels and there's standards for each and schools apply and show documentation. And every single school does something called a tier fidelity inventory which is a self-assessment that is done with me as the external coach. And there is very specific criteria as to what's going on at tier one, tier two and tier three. And it's done with the administrator, the building administrator there in the room. So platinum level, actually, I know that two years ago, it was something like, there's over a thousand schools in Illinois doing PBIS. We had two or three doing it at that level and so it was very significant. And even the second tier is like something less than fifty percent of the schools. So it's a very, very high level. And then all of our schools over the last two years, for the most part, have been doing the basic implementing. And it might even mean that they have a higher score at tier three, but they didn't have the record to score at tier two. And what this, all, the whole purpose of it is towards action planning, towards picking out specific items that are seen to be of challenge and need to be done, you know. That.
Thank you.
You're going to help me look at some of the other questions, right?
So thinking about how it's being implemented across the district with consistency and thinking about, I mean, you've basically answered it.
Yeah, there are standards. There's assessment tools that are done throughout the year. You know, there's external coaching that I'm two, three days a week at that position. You know, there's training and there's information sharing. There's, you know, a lot of it, some of the ups and downs occur because it's so staff and teacher-driven, of course with administrative support. But, you know, as you have turnover within a team, the coach is the tier one label for the person or persons in charge. You know, as those people come and go over years, I mean, that has a big impact. And so retraining and supporting those people is a big part of what I do. And there's also, you know, the national and state trainings and things like that that are available.
And then in terms of the consistency across the district, in terms of the extrinsic versus intrinsic ways that students are being rewarded.
There are methods used, you know, in all schools and they're done in different ways, at different time of the year. There are things such as in a thoughtful way, slowly diminishing the amount of gachas, booths, whatever they might be called, in the different buildings over time. Sometimes it's done developmentally so that as they get older, you might be doing less. But I will say, I think one of the exciting aspects of the restorative justice and restorative practices is that it'll kind of foot that bill. You know, PBIS is really good at saying, well, this is what we do. And yes, there are cool tool lessons where we talk a little bit about why, but the restorative practices and being a member of the community and the whole relationship aspect, I think will really move things forward. Because that's, that's always been a concern with PBIS and things, you know, programs are faced to some degree of honest struggle.
If I may, just wearing my former hat, when I worked at the Castle, the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotionally Learning, the question's a really important one on stressing both intrinsic and extrinsic. And on the intrinsic side, this is where a lot of the work that's done where social-emotional learning is embedded into the curriculum. So it's actually part of what you're reading in class today or, you know, the math or science groups that you're in and how you're actually working together as a group. So I think as we progress down the next couple of years in the strategic plan and we think about how we're proactive and intentional about social-emotional learning, it's not only the important programs that we have like PBIS, but it's also what's going on day in and day out in classes taught by classroom teachers. And that's going to be, part of that will be an intentionality that we'll have over the next few years.
First, I really loved your presentation. And what I loved is that you really demonstrated leadership. It just showed to me at least in the way you were presenting and talking about it, the level of ownership that you have over this and your commitment. So thank you for that because I think it's really critical. It's interesting, consistency was a word that came to my mind as well. There were so many programs up here, many of which I was familiar with and many which I was hearing of for the first time. And so a couple of things in that consistency bucket. Making sure that our community knows that these programs are out there. And I tend to think this way, but I think sometimes putting information in a grid and presenting it that way out to parents or members of the school community is great. If you laid out, you know, here's the area of focus, the program, here's the audience, here are the collaborators, here's when, you know, is it for every child, is it, you know, based on need, you know, when does it occur? All of that just really concisely, the objectives of the program so that people could easily see on the website, this is everything that's available because this, I just feel like it's so important people know what we're doing current state. Because I feel like if, if I don't know, I'm guessing that there was some information up there for other people. And if the board doesn't know everything in terms of this programming, there are probably a lot of other people who don't as well. So I think to celebrate what we're doing, I would love to see that. And I think it could be an easy win just to make that available to people on the website. The other thing around consistency besides awareness is both the availability and use of the formal programs as well as the integration with the curriculum. You don't have to answer this tonight, but it's a question that I would be interested to hear answered when we continue this conversation as part of the strategic plan, which is, what are we doing to ensure consistency of the use of these programs when they should be used as the formal piece? And then the integration with curriculum that teachers do maybe less formally? What are we doing to ensure consistency? So it's not, you've got a teacher who happens to be really interested in or skilled at this and so they're getting it versus another teacher who may prioritize something else. I don't know what that is. I know that it's tougher at a systems level to make sure that happens, but I think that's going to be really critical as we look at the strategy. The last piece that I'd be interested in is the data at a school level on the ODRs in the discipline as it relates to equity. And I know we've seen that probably once or maybe twice in the last four years. We certainly see suspension data on a regular basis, but I think whatever you have available already, not creating more work, but at a school level to see that analysis would be really interesting, I think, for the board to have at its fingertips. So again, not creating more work, but just sharing what you already have. So I just kind of threw a lot out there, but thank you for all of your work in this area.
So one of the strategies is to have these school climate committees that will be at each school. So the idea is the umbrella will be the whole child council, but there'll be school climate committees. And that's where the programs and their fidelity in use will be analyzed as well as the ODRs in each building. So there is going to be a, you know, a way for us to take a look at that in every building.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that Joyce? So does that mean that there'll be some kind of qualitative evaluation that those school committees produce? Or are you doing any kind of formal evaluation of how this connects to the achievement data?
Well, Peter Goddard and myself are, you know, we developed metrics that we were going to use in terms of assessing our impact and what we're using. So that will be embedded within those climate committees for us to kind of see what's going on.
Thank you.
And we'll be able to tell, excuse me, President, we'll be able to tell good data-driven stories, whether it's a formal evaluation with a control group, I think we want to be careful about overproportioning that.
Yes.
I want to echo what Richard said. I think this is amazing for us to see the scope of the types of programs we're doing. I'm especially excited about what you had said, Andy, kind of the interplay now between, you know, all the work we do in PBIS and now with restorative practices and other things to balance that out. I think it's gonna be great to look at the patterns. I mean, we've already had such improvements and disciplinary improvements, but to look at those patterns over the next couple of years. I really had just one question, this is a knowledge one. You referred to Second Step. I don't know what that is and I've heard it referred to several times as one of our core social-emotional learning programs. So could someone explain what it is and the purpose?
So Second Step is one of the programs that's produced by committee for children and they have a preschool through fifth grade program. And this is a very general social-emotional learning program that covers skills for learning, identification of feelings. It goes into emotion management and then problem solving. And so it is a thirty-two-week curriculum, which right now, I have had the experience of using it in a school, that it was taught in every classroom for a year. And it was extremely challenging to do that and manage all of the other things that need to be going on. So in most of our schools, what's happening with that programming is we're using it as a tier-two intervention. So if a child is having trouble with aggression, they might be referred to an emotion management group that would be a time-limited group that just focuses on that piece.
And middle school is pretty much a tier-two, short-term, focused on how the referral came, how the need of the child is.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, is Second Step in all middle schools?
Yeah, it's not used every time. Like Diana was saying, like, we change the curriculum from year to year based on needs. Like we worked on the seven habits of highly effective teens, it seemed to be a really good curriculum for a particular group of kids. So it is in all middle schools. It's not necessary that you capture it every day that you walk into one of our schools. Because when it's a tier-two, and that's why I had to say about not knowing some of the programs that you mentioned, when it's a tier-two program, it may be that you've never heard it because if your parent, maybe your child wasn't in one of those. So it may be something that's going on for the children who need it, but not, you might not have heard, as opposed to the building-wide, the tier-one type programs.
I'll ask my question. I'll echo the thanks because I have watched over the years how the climate and the vocabulary of the children has changed, that they have learned to talk a different language than when my kids started out many years ago. And so it really is amazing the way you've started at a young age to teach them some of these skills. But one persistent problem that I still hear about and I have particularly, you know, last couple of years, it's the bullying in middle school. And it's not the obvious bullying, it's the more subtle bullying. And we often get complaints from parents that they'll go to the administration and it's not recognized. And I am always at a loss of what to tell parents to do at that point. I think it's just a question of what, what are those avenues for both the parents and the children when these things are going on at a very subtle level and the parents are not able to access the help they need and what you all, how we can help parents be empowered with these problems?
I think the key is letting us know. I think that is number one. I have a lot of students who, time goes on and they say, well, no one's doing anything. And I say, well, did you tell anyone? No. Or, I've told someone years ago and no one's ever done anything. Things change, things evolve, practices get better. I think that's key. And so, you know, I think individuals react differently to different situations and consistency is key. And we have to all learn to deal with situations across the board trained the same way. And so I think letting an individual know what's going on so that we can handle the situation effectively is key. And I think, I will speak for Haven, I know when we talk about these anti-bullying things as well as the Erica's Lighthouse, we get so many kids coming in and talking about, my friend is going through this, what do you recommend? And it is just that time to enlighten our students about really how to effectively deal with it and not just be a bystander. And so they're all speaking the language.
And do you have new strategies for when you identify this bullying environment, what you do with both the victims and the bullies or whatever you want?
I know, you know, we have our strategies where we talk it out, you know, we handle it in a very private manner. Our administrators get involved. I know one of the things I, we teach in our curriculum that is across the board in middle school, it's the language that the kids are speaking. I don't want to be a snitch. We have to talk about that and address that. There's a difference between being a snitch and really protecting yourself. And, you know.
I think some of it is about the subtlety of what happens at that age. And the backlash. Here conflicts are often referred to as bullying. Some of it has to do about the skills that are developing at this age about solving interpersonal conflict, which is not an easy thing to do. So it's more, you know, it's like, you don't always teach judgment by providing a solution. A lot of times you teach judgment by providing a process of thinking out what the problem-solving process, if you want. And so sometimes when it comes to interpersonal conflict between kids and the subtle things you talk about, you know, sometimes you talk about the girl kind of more exclusion-based bullying that isn't as direct as someone hitting someone, you know, calling them names. There's a lot of conversation about skill-building for how to resolve interpersonal conflict. Because sometimes, and I always say to parents, just call us, we'll talk it out. Sometimes, as I said, it's not as simple as this person did this to this person and the solution is this person has to be punished. Because the person who does the bullying and the person who receives the bullying, their roles are very fluid. The same kid in this moment is hurting someone and then ten minutes later, they're being hurt by someone. So I think it's very subtle. The skills are high-level skills.
I think just in a, there is some hearing responses, but we do try to respect the student, the parents. That communication to us is really important because we want to respect their anonymity because we don't want them to have, feel threatened or feel, most of them are really scared to share that. So we try to reassure them, we try to communicate with them, communicate to the parents, the administrators. We like to identify where it may be happening because that can be important to talk to other staff to be more aware of what's happening.
other staff, to be more aware of what's happening. So I think there's a lot of different ways. Sometimes we're able to bring the students together and sort of mediate that. Sometimes that's not a great idea. It's just working more individually with the students. So I think there's just a lot of different responses, depending on the situation with the student.
And PBIS matters, because the more you make your school a place where that shouldn't be the case, you know, the more you empower the building to run, to have this climate, the better off you are.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll say.
Sorry, you have the other question.
Good presentation. I guess Richard really hit on it, just how as community members we can be more aware. I actually want to copy your PowerPoint, because I saw some of the programs that I think can help somebody. I don't know if everyone knows a lot of those programs, and I think, you know, if you can sort of leak it out there. Or we can be a resource when someone asks. I think it's good to see it and touch it and know it and have a better understanding.
That's an easy one.
Thanks. Great. Thank you so much for coming and staying all the way to the very end for your presentation. Okay, we're on to the principal selection process.
So let me start this conversation and frame it and walk through, just very briefly, what you've seen in your packet as six steps, and then take comments and questions. As we move forward in the hiring process in the district for principals, we have the obvious goal, which is to hire best-of-brightest and experienced leaders who can come in and help the instructional leaders and community leaders in each of our schools. We want the process to be transparent, we want it to be inclusive, we want it to be effective, we want to make sure that we're yielding the best quality candidates, and we want it to be efficient, which would be to maximize the, take advantage of people's time and their commitments, but also to maximize that in a way that yields the outcomes we're looking for. What we've introduced that is in your package is the process that we're undertaking as we do our searches right now. It starts with communicating the process and engaging, when there's an opening, engaging with the administrators and the community members at the school. It's an interactive communication with members of the cabinet who work with me, and if not through, if not through John and his team, at the very least through each of the cabinet liaisons, because we have liaisons that are assigned to the school. We work directly with both the teacher and staff community, and then with the parents and community members in the schools to develop a leadership profile. We just recently did that, and we did that in the Best Roads search. We recently just did that in the Oakton and the Nichols search. And it's a very structured process. Parents and community members met for an hour, hour and a half, and put issues and concerns on that they have, and it's really crafting out a vision for the future. And then we did a separate one with staff and community members. While we're doing this, we have a posting up for recruiting the candidates that we have, and as we do the leadership profile, we weave the leadership profile into the posting. We also want to take advantage of getting the posting out as soon as possible, so we can attract folks who are interested in coming to Evanston and Skokie. And so we put a posting out, we mesh together the leadership profile into that posting, and we use the leadership profile as well as a lens for the questions that we might have when we actually do the applicant screening. The initial round of applicant screening happens at the centrally, so that we can look through the numerous applications that we have, the paperwork, screen out colleagues who are not qualified to assume the principalship, and then look at the wide range of colleagues and try to match their expertise to the leadership profile and to the nature of the school. At that point, we have an internal interview with the leadership team that I convene and with me. And so this will be candidate interviews at this point of up to eight candidates that we would bring forward from the screened colleagues that we've gone through, and those indeed tomorrow are taking place on the Oakton search, as we look forward to an interesting and long day tomorrow. Once we get to that stage, what that committee will do is forward four or five candidates to a broader community engagement. Community engagement has two aspects to it. One is that there will be a committee that will be convened, that will have teachers, administrators, and community members as part of that. And that committee will meet slightly ahead of the community forum, as we're calling it, to craft some questions. We even made, we were just talking about this today, solicit questions ahead of time with committee members by email, so that we can make that process efficient. So as people come in, they can look at several of the questions that their colleagues have created and try to decide on what makes most sense. And the interview itself will take place with the committee convening, but it will be in a community forum. So we will invite community members, broad-based community members. So that means people who live in the school community, people who are advocates in the community, people who represent our bargaining groups, including DEC and our DEC colleagues. And what we want to have is a dynamic where we have the actual committee looking and engaging with the candidates, and the community members engaging with the candidates. We'll have a survey of sorts that will gather data from the community that will then be shared with the committee, as the committee deliberates on taking the four to five candidates and recommending up to three candidates to me for a final interview. At that stage, I'll do the final interview. I'll look very closely at the committee ratings that they have. I'll skim through what the community says as well, and I'll also have all the paperwork before me, and at that stage make a recommendation to the board for appointment. So it's a comprehensive process that starts with identifying the needs of the school, engages parents, community, and staff, invites teachers, staff members, parents, and community to be on a committee, and then broadens that to actually have a community process, and ends with candidates that are brought forward for a final conversation with me, and then a recommendation to you. So that's the process in all.
Thanks. Four questions, comments?
Yeah. I really appreciate Paul and John and Beatrice and whoever else has been involved, and you spend a lot of time developing this process and articulating it and putting it down to the board to understand what you're doing. I am somewhat sorry that it's not a draft, it's not a, it's what you're doing. You're doing this now. And so I feel to a certain extent that the comments I have will have to be for the future if you take them in. And I'm going to speak as a former teacher in this district and as a member of the Strategic Plans Thriving Workforce Committee, so that's where this opinion comes from. There are some omissions in the process that I find puzzling and somewhat troubling. And I feel that for teachers, the person who has the most direct effect on their working life, and whether they thrive in being a member of the District 65 staff, that singular person is the principal of their building. They have a huge impact on how happy and productive and all those good things that teachers can be. And every focus group, town hall meeting, committee meeting we had during the strategic planning process, teachers stressed over and over again, the collaboration was very, very important to them. But when I looked at the goals for the principal hiring process, your goals are transparency, inclusivity, effectiveness, and efficiency. And I found surprising that collaboration was not one of the goals, that it was collaborative And where I particularly noticed this is the in-depth interviews of candidates, where you're going to decide which candidates advance to the final, the more open forum. So it's, you've screened the candidates, you narrowed it down to about eight, as I think you said, and on that particular stage, the only, those interviews will be conducted only by central administration staff and building principals. And to leave out teachers, either building teachers or DEC, I think is unfortunate, because it implies to a certain extent that you might feel that DEC or the building teachers have nothing to add at this stage, and yet I think they do. I think that they're, you know, they can look at a pool of eight people and say, you know, "This is a really great person and this isn't," and it wouldn't diminish your efficiency, it wouldn't diminish your effectiveness, and would go a whole long way to being more I wanted to be a board member, because I wanted to help this district become a more collaborative district, and I want to bring that goal of the strategic plan to life, and this was a chance to do it. I think your efforts so far have been, you know, all in a positive direction, but the collaborative piece I think needs some more thought and work, and if you can get it in and this go around, it'd be great. And that's what I guess I have to say about that.
I hear you, I do, because I, and it's not really even my place to speak, but I do just have a response, because I, when I hear the word inclusive, to me, that can also be collaborative, and so...
It can.
And as I look at this, you know, I think meeting with the school community, so that can include teachers and staff in step one. Step two is input, you know, gathered from parents and teachers to develop the leadership profile. And then I think the, you know, apart from the final interviews, which are just with the superintendent, there are two stages of interviews before that, and one of them, the teachers have a voice.
In one of them.
But a very important one, because it's the one where they recommend who Paul gets to meet. And I, I mean, so is your, would your solution be, because I hear what the problems are, how would you change this? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Oh, I would just have either some DEC representative on that...
Step four.
Step four, I think it's step four. It's the one, what step is it?
The one...
It's step four, yeah. We're there.
Who is on that committee, just to clarify?
Well, my understanding is it's the central cabinet people and two building principals?
No, it's cabinet and me. So it's basically a superintendent's interview at that stage.
I thought...
It says two principals or one principal and one special service.
It depends on where you're looking. On the floor chart, it doesn't say that.
Right here, step four, candidate interviews, eight max. It says the superintendent and cabinet conduct, induct interviews, the assistant superintendent of HR, assistant superintendent of schools, special services, two principals or one principal and one special services supervisor.
And that's where I would put some teacher person, maybe.
Do you want me to...
Maybe you would help.
Is the principal involved, or is there a... I think we have just a version control issue on the memo. I hear the comments on teachers being involved earlier in the process.
Because the group of people that you advance is very important, and this is, you know, you narrowed it down to eight out of many applications and telephone interviews, and now you're down to your final eight. That's not a very big number, and I think that you, it would increase... I mean, was there a reason for not including teachers at that stage?
I think the teachers are included at the very beginning, at step two, in the development of the leadership profile. And I think the meetings with teaching staffs at Rhodes and Oakton and most recently Nichols have been very successful. And so it's a matter of, there is a tremendous amount of teacher voice and parent voice that's included very early in the process, at the initiation, in the creation of the leadership profile. So I would, I would hope the teachers would have, would see their voices coming across in the leadership profile, which is then used to create questions and create scenarios that guide us through steps three and four.
It's still different than having that direct impact on, "I've met these eight people, these are the four that I really like." And they have that perspective, which is not an administration perspective, but a building or DEC perspective. That's just a different viewpoint.
And I guess from where I sit, I hear you, and so it's worth thinking about how we would pivot moving forward. I do think, as Richard suggests, I mean, the inclusive and collaborative piece is at least attempted, from my mind, in the early stages and the later stages, and that the piece about moving from the eight to the, moving from eight to five, and then at that point, there are teachers, there are parents, there are administrators who are part of the committee, and then there's a broader opportunity to participate between eight and five. So that was an opportunity for me to take, take a deep dive at the early stages to make sure that the principals that we're bringing forward are principals that I feel comfortable bringing forward.
Mm-hmm. And I understand all of that. It just seemed to me a gap and a mission that I still find troubling. It just, to me, it implies that you, inclusive and collaboration, inclusivity and collaboration are not the same. They have different definitions, that's why we have two different words.
I understand.
And collaboration is working together, and inclusive, inclusivity is making sure that the people that you have working together represents, so you have to have both, because they're not working together.
But didn't anyone else have to offer an opinion on this?
So I would say I view step four as actually still part of screening, and maybe that's the difference. There's still screening applicants out there.
Right.
And so, but they're screening them out, I would say more for professional, and then that step five is the fit along with, you know, do they have the qualifications to even be a principal? And then they come in, step five is where you get them in. The teachers are there, the school is there, everyone is there, and that's how you interview, especially when you're trying to narrow down a pool of these, those two. That's my two steps, so...
I guess I would just agree, that I think, I mean, or that you are screening, yes, indeed you are, but this is an important point at which you say, "Find out who the teachers like as well as who the administration likes."
But if you give them too many choices, then...
I think most people can cope with eight.
I do, you know, and I...
Man over here.
I was just going to say, and I think, and I have probably a different perspective. There are a lot of people who have zero input in hiring their boss. And I think the fact that we're, I feel like we're doing something that is collaborative. It may not be, we could have, you know, parents and teachers involved at every step theoretically. And I think there is, there are probably several reasons, you know, one is just logistics, but I think having both at the beginning and the most important step of who's going to be presented to Paul are, in my view, the most important places to make sure that we have that input. And I don't, you know, I'm not sure how, you know, I'd have to think on step four and if that, including more people in there, because I feel like, you know, if we're bringing in...
I'm not necessarily saying more, more people, I'm maybe even just one person.
But then, so what about the parent perspective? You know, if we talk about if we're going to be student-centered, parents would be concerned about, you know, the principal that's going to be running the school that their kids go to.
True. I guess also the fact is we're departing from what has been a traditional involvement of DEC in principal selection. DEC has traditionally been involved in a more, in an at-the-table way, not in an audience way.
But at the table, there'll be four teachers. I'm assuming that at least one of those four teachers will be a member of DEC, probably all four. I'm welcoming Paula to sit in all of the interview sessions, and not only to write me a note, but to come meet with me, so that I can actually hear her perspective. So I think actually there's even more engagement of DEC, and there could be, the entire faculty of the school can show up. of DEC, and there could be, the entire faculty of the school can show up, and that would be a majority of DEC members.
Can we understand when DEC was involved in prior years? Because it's my understanding that four or five candidates were recommended to the school-level committee, which DEC sat on.
Right.
But did DEC, was DEC involved before the four or five that were...
Well, that was the only...
Paula?
We have the history of when DEC was, at what stage in the process DEC would be involved. I know, they didn't, there wasn't such an elaborate, elaborate process.
Exactly. So what's happened is you're adding a layer before, DEC has always gotten involved at the school level when you put together a committee of parents, teachers, DEC, and some administrators. So it's, it's the same. All that's happened is you've added a second level of screening before everyone, before they come to the school committee. So it's not, in fact, changing DEC's involvement. It's, it's just, it's extending the screening process before the applicants come to the school committee.
So, my second?
Sure.
So, yes, I mean, it used to be the committee with the parents and the teachers, the DEC president was on, and everybody on that committee had a vote.
So, I mean, is the concern, and maybe this is what you were saying, you know, that there be explicitly in this, in step five, you know, a DEC representative? Like, is it the school DEC representative, or that be called out explicitly as part of that step five? Would that resolve the issue? Because I think Tracy's point is, everything else is the same, except maybe being explicit about that membership. And we've extended the screening process.
I think you're saying you'd like to be involved in the earlier screening.
But I get that, but I'm trying to get to where there might be some middle point that seems to work.
Any other thoughts? I welcome that, but did anyone want to join in?
I think it relates, it relates to what Claudia and Richard are talking about, and that is a question of the rationale for this proposal and how it will change or improve the outcomes at the end of the day. Right? Coming from a school who just went through this process, there are a lot of questions about what inclusion, collaboration, and transparency actually mean, like, at the end of the day. And, you know, does involving more parents in the community in a public interview forum, you know, what is the, the end game there, and how will dissent be handled? Right? How, how will dissent from any quarter of the community, when you open it up so publicly, how will we handle that?
So I have a couple responses. One is, I want to be as inclusive as possible, but I'm also held to account for the principal's performance. And when I stand and sit here and have to present accountability data, when I have to present data on social emotional learning, when I have to present curriculum, I'm the person where the buck stops.
Right.
And so that's where the rationale is, to have the screening process, as Omar highlights, be one where I feel comfortable bringing forward candidates to the community that then the community can engage in. So I think that's a, that's an important part of the early part of this stage. In terms of dissent, it's a really interesting question, because there's no guarantee that if we convene one committee without the community work, that that's going to be perfect. And how does dissent come forward in that particular forum? And there's going to be agreements and disagreements, and in the ideal world, we reach beautiful consensus and everybody can say we can move forward. And when not, how does that voice actually get forward? So part of what I suggested by, by moving into more of a community forum, which was basically how I was interviewed on my job, is to still keep the committee structure. So the committee structure is there with four voices of teachers, four voices from the parent community, and what were the other two?
Two.
Two administrators.
And two administrators.
And so that, that committee is going to be making, is going to be deliberating. And if they can reach consensus and move forward with the three candidates of choice, that's a, that's a great day. If they have disagreements, one, I would hope that they could actually voice their disagreements, and two, if they still have disagreements, then the, the data and the information that we get from the community actually helps to inform that process as I sit down and look at a portfolio of three or four candidates to do the final interview. So, so in some ways, dissent, we hope that we get to consensus, and a consensus of a recommendation of up to three candidates that can be moved forward that we're really happy about. And if there's concerns in the committee, or if there's concerns in the community, we'll be, I'll be able to see both sets of data and be able to make a recommendation, and then be transparent about that based on what I have.
Great. Just one final comment, and that's, you know, a cautionary note about how much, how staff-intensive this process is.
That's correct.
And is it the right thing to do? I mean, speaking as a parent, I want to trust you all as our educational leaders in making, you know, your first sentence in the memo, exceptional principal hires. They don't, we don't get to have this opportunity very often to bring new principals into our district. And so, as parents, we hope and expect that, you know, we're putting our faith and trust into you and to, into this process. And I think making sure that there's a balance here of how intensive this is for staff and sort of what the right balance is in terms of public input, I think is something to be considered going forward. As Claudia said, the ship has kind of sailed already for three schools potentially, but as other openings come up, I hope that we can have this process being formed by real thoughtfulness.
And to also make a point about the, about what's the step five, wherever the open public interview kind of happens. And I know that it is obviously something that we did with the superintendent candidates. When we were talking through that process, there was some, we had some understanding that that was not necessarily atypical in a superintendent search. I don't know if that's true of principal search. How expected is it that there would be some sort of public interview process like that? And are we narrowing down our candidate pool by having that as part of our process? That, that's kind of my, I like the idea of it, but I wouldn't want to narrow down our pool by having that as part of it.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think the, the range of processes run from frankly having minimal inclusivity or collaboration to, to being broad and open. So we worry a bit that for the outstanding candidate who doesn't want to identify themselves as a candidate without knowing that they're going to get the job, that they may push back or they may withdraw. And yet, we think this is an important part of engaging an already engaged community. We want to engage the community, and, and we want to test the process out.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know then if the number, you know, when you're, if you're one of four or five people who are going to do this process, it's different than if you're one of two people. Again, I would just put some, I mean, I feel like, you know, when we're looking to hire principals, most often we're probably going to be recruiting people who already have positions, or a lot of times, not unnecessarily always, but it just, I would assume that they would want some sort of assurance that they're pretty close to having the new position. And I, I just, I worry that that is, being one of five is, is may cut some people off.
I, just thinking aloud, if we are hiring, if we're promoting the hiring within the district, it might be difficult for an assistant principal to put themselves forward and not get the job.
And have that be known in public.
Yeah, that would be hard.
I think that, and I do, I do share concerns that both Suni and Jennifer have expressed, and especially in terms of outcomes. And I think, I don't know that there's a right answer, but I do wonder what if this committee of parents and teachers who maybe have more closely examined some of the information and been able to spend more time with the candidate, reach a conclusion that's different than what, you know, occurred publicly, maybe, and I'm assuming, and I shouldn't assume this necessarily, but that there's some public interview, but there also could be some component where the, just the committee is meeting with them as well. Is that fair? Is it, is every word happening publicly?
Our plan was to keep it in public.
I, I think the, the question we'd have is if, so you...
Yeah, I would have a concern about that.
I, I probably would too. And it looks like Jennifer does too, and Suni, and maybe Tracy.
I thought that when I heard it explained, that the candidate would have some sort of question answer in public, but then the committee would also have an interview, as we did with the superintendent, and be able to review some of the feedback from the community, but not...
We were going to do it as a simultaneous process, and then the committee would actually go into deliberations.
But they wouldn't talk any further?
They wouldn't talk any further, that's the way.
Yeah.
My, my concern also, just to add, is, you know, what if there's a big difference in the viewpoints, and how do we manage that perspective? It kind of gets to the dissent, but I would have a, I, I think it is a really different type of conversation when you have your conversation with, you know, a hundred people versus having a conversation with ten people sitting around a table together.
And I, at least I found during the superintendent's search, that the public forum greatly informed my opinions of the people that I was then able to interview, so that it gave rise to follow-up questions that I wanted to ask. And it was really valuable, but it, it was necessary to have that additional interview then, just to talk with everybody else, see what, if they were getting the same impressions, and often, and that, I think it was really helpful.
What would be the barrier to doing that? Because it doesn't seem like it would take time, administrative time or effort. It would just be the committee's commitment.
Time. I mean, we, we have the one, and this is not a, if we had a longer period of time before, before the end of the school year, we can, we can easily choreograph that. But we don't have that window. We really don't have that window.
It's committee time and candidate time as well.
Right.
That would be the concern of adding another, another step.
For, you talked about for just this year's...
For these, yeah, I mean, we can move.
So, but are you saying that you hear what we're saying for future processes?
Absolutely, absolutely.
But, and then it really is...
So is that a really big concern?
I'm sorry?
Is it, but time, I mean, it depends on when you...
What if we just asked the people that are involved and see if they would be willing to, you know, is it adding an hour on for each?
How long do you envision the public? Because you can, in fact, just split it in half. You have a public, half a private. If it's really a time crunch, would that be...
Yeah, that's an interesting one.
Or add slightly more time.
Because that's two people at that point.
No, it's three to five.
Three to five.
Four to five, four to five.
Four to five candidates.
It's individual, five individual interviews, then after a group interview.
You mean you were going to interview five at the same time?
We're going to interview five back to back to back.
How long would that, would each candidate be with, in the public forum?
I think we could talk about forty minutes, forty-five minutes.
Oh, wow.
Oh, wow.
So you, I mean, that's like three and a half hours that you think the community would be there?
So that, so this is the difference between, one of the differences between the committee and the public, is the committee would be expected, would need to be there for the entire process. In other words, the public may be able to come for the beginning, may be able to come for the end, can offer opinions on, on the people that they see. Are they able to stay for the entire three and a half hours? Not everyone is going to be able to make that commitment. I have a question, because I, I'm having a hard time understanding, like, if we're, if, if a committee, a school-based committee is comprised of four parent, or four teachers roughly, and a handful of parents, three or four parents, shouldn't we be putting our trust in that committee to represent the school? I don't understand this public process, and I don't, I, I think it's, I think it's unfair to candidates to put themselves out publicly. It also, for anyone within the district that's trying to move up, I think it eliminates that. I don't think you're going to have parents or community members engaged for three and a half hours for this kind of, I mean, I think even the superintendent searches were on different nights. I, I think we need to put our trust in those school committees, the school committees that are selected by, you know, if, to Omar's point, this is about fit. Number five is about fit, school fit, like the candidate fit with a school, then we should be placing our trust in the people that are closest to the school and kind of can represent our schools.
And I do want to say, like, an acknowledgement that I think part of the intent here that hasn't been said is you're trying to be transparent and inclusive, so like, and maybe it just went...
All those stuff we've been asking.
I'd like to acknowledge that, right? Because that's what people want, and maybe this isn't the right way to, to do that.
You know, and I do, I do feel like we might have misled you in our, in the goal, and, but adding on to, should we put our trust in this committee? I think there are different conversations. I was under the impression you did both the public and then the private interview, but I wouldn't give up that interview behind closed doors with that committee, because I think that's where we really get the interesting questions.
Yes.
And I, if you had to choose one, so if you could do both, that would be wonderful, but if it's a time crunch and you have to do one, I would definitely do the private one, where you have a really in-depth interview with the committee. And I don't know how you all feel with that.
Yes.
Yeah, I totally agree.
We all agree.
Great.
Your own thinking will be better, because you'll just be on information overload if you do.
We can, we can find, one, we appreciate the, the conversation. That's why we bring this forward. Two, I want to go back to Claudia's point. The, the train has left partially because we want to take advantage of available and outstanding candidates right now, and that's the, that's the window that we're in, given the, the two openings that we have right now. We want to do this well, and so that's why we were, that's why we've been pushing the process, as we've been pushing it. I think we can, we can knock our heads, we're still at the stage where we're, we're doing some of the early screening. We can knock our heads together and come up with a process that's, that's engaged at the school committee level, where that, that school committee would have a way of interviewing folks and be able to bring back up to three candidates and, or three candidates and, and their, their ratings on the three candidates, so that I can look at the range of ratings and then actually make some decisions moving forward.
In terms of, in terms of the processes that are underway, I think I know the answer, but I'll ask it as a question. What expectations have been set regarding the process and, and timing and such? Because I think there's a, an expectations challenge.
When John and I met with both Oakden as well as Nichols community, we did share the open forum process. The only, the other thing is, as we've gone through screening candidates and we're explaining to them the process, we've led them through all the stages, so they, for those candidates that continue to move through, they do have the understanding that there will be a public interview. I guess my concern would be with what we've already expressed to the school communities, and certainly if we need to modify or change it, that we can do that. We just need to share that information with them as soon as possible.
And yeah, I think for the candidates, it's probably not an issue if we simply move from a public to a private. I could imagine some might actually prefer that. So how do we handle what expectations have been set out in the community?
I, I think we can work on some ideas that would lead to some kind of informal opportunity for school communities that would be satisfactory, and would allow the community to have a private, that have, not private, but have the committees sit down at a table time to talk with the candidates.
As long as you can preserve that, I think anything you could offer the community beyond that would be great, if there's time.
Thank you.
Can I just add? Can we, we talked about this before, but for the school committee, can we make sure we have like a packet with really details what their response, their roles and responsibilities will be for the interview, and that everyone is on the same page, and instead of some people believing that they have, you know, more power than they have, or more votes?
Well, and that was one of the things I think I had written, is just, again, going back to my theme of a grid, because I think laying things out in a grid can often be a good way for people to digest information, and just laying out the details that are in the memo, saying, you know, here's the stage, here's the objective, here's who's involved, here's, you know, what they'll do, and then there's a time. So it's, you know, three months from anticipated offer date, two months from anticipated offer date, so that people are really clear what is and is not occurring at each stage. And I think all the substance is here, but it's just a little, it, it might be easier for people to digest it laid out in a different format. to digest it laid out in a different format. Pretty please.
There are three small element things that I think it would be helpful, especially if this is going to become a document that the community gets to see too, is that the question of a school visit for finalists, or a finalist, you know, is that a prerequisite of actually visiting the place where they are going to be the leader, and is that part of this process? Another piece that I didn't see in here was the transition, bringing a new leader onboard, and what the onboarding transition process, welcome process, looks like. And then the last thing is, you know, and this might be something that's in a different category, and that's principal mentoring and induction for principals that are either new principals or new-to-Everson principles.
To some degree, I mean, that's a separate, like, we're talking a little bit about a separate topic.
That's on, those are onboarding and-
Versus onboarding and communication. Those are very important, but I'm not sure-
It's part of an equation of success, though. I mean, if, going back to the first sentence of exceptional leadership, have it go all the way. Yes, I agree.
Correct.
Okay, so it sounds like we're, we've reached an agreement and can see another version of this, but no, we have a rough plan to go forward with the next two processes. Right?
Well, it sounds like we're leaning against, we're not leaning against community engagement, but the broad community forum, if we have to make a choice, the committee interview is the way to go that represents the community, and we can work on choreographing that. And then we want to be respectful of our colleagues and our neighbors who are at Oakton and Nichols, to make sure that that's not a, that they will be truly represented on the committee as well.
I think the two firm board requests would be that there is the private interview, and then from Richard's point of view, to really put this out in a very concrete, clear way, so everyone knows what's happening. Okay. Great, thank you very much. This is the first time I've ever seen it aired like this, I think it's very helpful.
Yeah, this is really, it's a big step forward.
Big. Okay, now budget update. Mary?
I'm going to have Kathy just review kind of where we are in the budget process, and just to keep you apprised. Kathy?
Thank you, Mary. And since it's twenty after ten, I'll be brief. Budget documents for fiscal year sixteen are being put together. Assumptions used to build our financial projections back in February are being refined, they're being reviewed, and they are becoming facts. But there is still a lot unknown, especially in relation to state revenues. We still don't have a final state budget, and that affects almost ten million of our revenues. Once we do, that's going to be finalized. Currently, we just use the assumptions that we use for financial projections. Salaries, cost of salaries and benefits is known. Next year will be the fourth and the final year of the contract. Health insurance benefits will increase by 5.1 percent. We had 5% in our assumptions, so that's very close. Also, transportation services, last week we didn't have that amount. This week, we know how much it's going to be increasing. Unfortunately, it's a lot more what we had in projections. In projections, we had 2.5 percent, and the actual increase is going to be much higher. On the revenue side, property taxes, the largest source of our revenues, are increasing by CPI for calendar year for 2013 of 1.5 percent, so substantially less than the cost of salaries and benefits. Again, like I said, we still don't know the final amount of state revenues. Information about federal revenues is trickling in. We did receive information about a tentative agreement on our Head Start grant. District applied for a new Head Start grant. We may be receiving up to 2.6 million, but until we see it in writing, we are not putting in our tentative budget. The draft tentative budget will be presented at the next finance meeting on June 8, and the tentative budget will be presented to the finance committee and to the board in August, and then the final budget in September. So that's our timeline for the budget, and we'll be bringing information and documents to the committee and to the board meetings.
Thank you. Great. Any questions? Candace?
I just have two questions. One is, the non-personnel reductions that we committed to as part of the overall reductions, are those going to be provided to us in terms of what the categories are as part of the presented budget?
Yes, yes, they will be included with June's packet, and both personnel and non-personnel, because we didn't really provide the details, and especially now with transportation costs, you know, being changed, that's all going to be included with the documents.
Okay. And then the second question is also related to the, it's related to the $200,000 investment around literacy, that we're using some of our savings. Will there be an opportunity for us to understand just kind of use of funds for that, given it's a pretty significant amount? Will that be part of the budget presentation, or at some point between now and budget approval, so we can get an understanding of the scope and use of the funds?
I think what we have, I mean, that's an estimate based upon what some of the pilots that we're running now, the Making Meaning pilot specifically, around comprehension, what that might cost to take to scale. So it's an estimate, it's for what we think it might cost to do some of the things we'd like to do.
Yeah, I'm thinking more of such as that. We're going to use this for Making Meaning, which does whatever, just so that we understand-
And we got it spelled out in the inner assumptions, all the additions to the budget, and-
I assume it'll estimate, so it won't be exact. Thanks. That would be great.
Great, thanks. Any other questions? Thank you both. Transportation update. Mary?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to share kind of publicly what has been going on. We are anticipating a lot of changes in our transportation department. Specifically, we are doing a thorough review and update of all of our IDOT hazards. We currently provide busing for students who live a mile and a half or further from their school of attendance, and that will remain. We also currently provide busing for students who live in IDOT-approved hazardous areas. And those areas are being, again, reviewed and updated. We know a lot of those conditions have changed. Many of those have not been updated for some thirty years. So we know we have stop signs in locations where we didn't used to have them, we have some stop controls. We also have adult crossing guards at some areas, and some reduced speed limits due to school zones, as well as reduced traffic counts. So all of those IDOT studies are being updated, and the result of that will be, we will be able to expand the walk areas for certainly most, if not all of our schools, and that will result in less students being eligible for transportation services, starting with the 2015-16 school year. We are slated to bring the hazard list to the Board Finance Committee for approval in June. That would be on June 8, and we're hoping to get letters out to families very soon after that review is completed. And we will be working on a communication, you know, campaign, so that these changes are communicated very clearly to the families affected by those changes. And another change is, we also provide busing for students who may attend a school for program reason, for maybe a TWE program, or an ELL, or an ACC program. If those students are not otherwise eligible for busing, we are not going to offer busing. So if those students live a mile and a half or further from that school they would be attending, we will continue to bus them. If they are affected by a remaining IDOT hazard, they will also be eligible for busing. But just because a student is attending a specific school for one of those programs, we won't automatically be providing busing unless they're otherwise eligible. And a final change is, we'll be affecting magnet schools. In addition to the increased walk areas, that will also affect magnet schools, we are planning to use a hub-and-spoke model for magnet school routes, where the pickup and drop-off locations will be District 65 school buildings, and that will streamline those bus routes and make them more efficient, because all of our magnet routes go on and do other routes in our district. So those are some big changes that we are planning for the fall, the start of the school year, and we will be communicating those as soon as we finalize details.
Thanks. Great. Questions? Hold on.
I just want, when you finalize it, will there be an estimated cost savings by moving? Do you anticipate there'll be cost savings by moving?
We do anticipate cost savings. I can tell you right now, we're estimating that somewhere around $200,000, but that is being reduced from a higher cost of transportation. As you may have read in the bids, the bids came in much higher than the estimates in our projections. So the overall cost of transportation has gone up, and it will be going up starting in the fall, but we will have some savings from these route reductions. I mean, but the end result will be still a large increase.
But this will change practice. It will mean that there'll be more children who will be walking, and the bus routes, as we have gotten used to them, will change to meet the hub-and-spoke model. We also are hoping that that hub-and-spoke model will allow us to have children wait for buses at schools, and then we'll have to figure this out, and there may be a cost to this. But on those extraordinarily cold days, if they can wait inside, and we'd have to have some supervision, so that's where there'll be a cost. We may want to take that cost, because then that would get us in a situation where, again, we're speculating that we might not be able, we might not have to cancel school as often as we did this year. So there's several dominos in effect here when, as we move forward on changing our practice of busing.
Just a quick question. So the, I might have missed it, I apologize if I did. I know we've talked in other meetings about understanding the actual ridership, and I don't know if you want to say anything about that.
Yes, very good point. Thank you for bringing that up. Another change is that we will be getting transportation sign-up forms out to families who will remain eligible for transportation, and we will only route those children if we get a definite yes response that they plan to use our transportation services. So in the past, we would have routed every child who was eligible, and this change, and the parents are going to have to fill out a form and get it back to us, we will only be routing students from whom we have received a positive response that they plan to use our transportation services. But that could further reduce the number of buses we have, but at this point, I don't have an estimate as to how much that change would be. So we do want parents to be aware, be on the lookout. We haven't sent them out yet, but another part of the change will be the form to sign up for bus service.
I think, yeah, communicating that early and often is going to be really, really critical. And I don't know if all of this can go together so that people have one communication about busing. I don't know what is best, that you guys can decide, but this is going to be a big change.
The mile, it was a mile, and now it's a mile and a half. I think that's also going to be significant.
I don't know that we bused at a mile. The law is to bus at a mile and a half or further. So I'm not aware of if we've bus students at a mile.
Oh.
We've done hazard, we've offered hazardous busing, and busing for students a mile and a half, and then the program option as well.
I guess that was a myth. I always thought it was a mile.
Yes.
I think you've all said it, and we can't underestimate the impact this is going to have. And I think, to your point of a campaign, it really does require a campaign. I was thinking it would be good, and if there's a way to do this before PTAs have gone apart, you know, kind of stopped meeting for the summer, because there may be a role, and maybe this is through the PTA council, but there may be a role that PTAs can help play in forming walking school buses. There's, you know, we need to work with the school communities, not just parents individually, but if there are opportunities for us to support students that, you know, seventy-three percent of our parents that are both working, are working families or single-headed household, that we can all kind of chip in together to make sure kids are getting to school safely. And then I think the other part of it is just thinking through the ramifications of potentially more congestion at schools in the fall, because you're going to likely have more parents dropping off and driving to the school. I think that will, you know, we just need to think through the implications of that for each of the sites, and we have congestion issues now. Maybe it's a wash, because you won't have the bus pulling up, I don't know, but there's going to be congestion issues that we need to deal with. So your creative hats on, how we best deal with that.
It would be helpful when we see the changes, street changes and length of walking, to see how many kids had impacts in the neighborhoods, because then at least you could anticipate what that increase in traffic would be, and parents that might feel that they're put out in the morning. So we would anticipate the scope of the problem if there is going to be one. I would, any other questions? I would suggest that, I would propose that we postpone our planning calendar until June 1st, if I know more coherent thoughts on that next debate. Upcoming work, we did say our next meeting was going to be the special board meeting on June 8, but I think we have reinstated the June 1st meeting because of some issues that I think we're going to have an executive session, and then there was another update. So that is not the next meeting, it is June 1st. Committee reports, the Joint 65-202, we don't have one on the calendar, we're in contact with 202, start planning those. Evanston's School Community Initiative, Candace?
We had a meeting last week, and just in response to, after the board meeting and presentation, so we're, Suni's joined the Leadership Council, and there's some transition of folks. Maria Allison is going to be joining from the administration, and so we're now basically looking at the planning calendar for the fall.
Great. Finance Committee, Candace?
Next Finance Committee meeting is June 8, and there are going to, the big, there are a number of topics, but certainly the presentation of the budget, and everything else is escaping me.
Will it be okay on Lincoln enrollment?
I do not know. Mary, would, had we planned to do it?
I think we said we would provide a memo on overall enrollment, and we've asked Peter to kind of monitor that, if he can get a memo out, as to how, just generally how things are looking in the buildings, and if there's anything unusual, to just spell that out for us.
Characterizer, Richard?
I don't think we have a date for the next meeting, and I, we're not going to have another one this summer, are we? I don't believe that we, so we're looking at sometime in the fall.
Paul?
Thanks.
We met last week, a relatively short meeting, there wasn't much on the docket, so we have our meeting coming up in the fall, which we already have some things to discuss, I'm sure. And then Wellness Council, that also has concluded for this school year. Our next meeting is not until the fall, and we will be looking for sort of, you know, get along sort of agenda ideas and projects, and as we're talking about transportation, I'm wondering if the whole idea of walking school buses could be incorporated with the Wellness Council, helping to coordinate that, so.
Great. City School Liaison, Patty?
I was just going to say that I think the meetings are getting more substantive each time we have them. I don't think we have a date for the next one yet, do we?
It's, there are three tentative dates for the whole year.
Three tentative dates, which I don't know.
Okay. Head Start, really shoddy, that is no, it's over on May 26. Joint Legislative Committee, nothing on the books right now. Ed Redd, nothing. Okay, informal presentation from the public. Anne Brown?
Good evening. I'm Anne Brown, and I'm a parent of a kindergartner at Kingsley Elementary School. I spoke last month to ask the Board of Education and district leaders to reconsider the cut of the assistant principal at Kingsley for the 2015 to 2016 school year. Today, I would like to first thank the administration and board members for providing a more detailed rationale for the budget cuts at that meeting and in subsequent emails. We are still greatly concerned about- We are still greatly concerned about the loss of our assistant principal. Kingsley is a school that serves a significant number of low-income students, including many from the 5th Ward. We are deeply concerned that the loss of key staff in our school will be detrimental to the entire school community, but especially to our most vulnerable students. That said, we are interested in working with the district to ensure that Kingsley has the resources needed for success for all our students next school year and into the future. Parents have already identified ways in which we can support the school community through volunteering in the school, exploring partnerships with local organizations, and raising private funds. We plan to work with our principal, Mrs. Murray, this summer to identify additional ways in which we, as parents, can support the work at Kingsley. And we hope to partner with the district to identify pathways through which we can support the needs of our school and schools across District 65. We are pleased that the board is moving forward to explore a referendum for the spring of 2016, and that the district is planning to convene a citizens advisory committee to provide advice on future budget decisions. In addition to the referendum, we strongly encourage the district to consider other ways to access resources, including how we can utilize private fundraising, public-private partnerships, and other means to generate additional revenue. And we wish to be included in discussions of what will be cut from the district's budget prior to decisions. We will ensure that the Kingsley community is present and involved in board meetings, finance committee meetings, and other forums. I personally hope that as you make decisions, you actively solicit input from school communities, though I do not claim to dictate how that is done at this moment, including from administrators, teachers, and parents, so that we can ensure that all great ideas are on the table. In the tough times that are coming, we'll need to access the wealth of creativity across our district to preserve quality education in all our schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kamika? Kamika?
My name is Kamika Okechuku. I'm a resident at 250 Ridge Avenue in Evanston. This is my family's third year in the school district, including two years at Joseph E. Hill Preschool, and this is my oldest child's first year in kindergarten at Oakton Elementary. I'm here to address the board today about the Two Way Immersion Magnet Program. My concerns with the program are centered on what appears to be a lack of transparency as it relates to the selective enrollment process, and the inequitable enrollment among English native speakers in the program. During the 2014-15 registration process, our family applied for enrollment in our homeschool's TWE program, and were not selected, but were placed on a waitlist. Recently, I contacted numerous individuals, probably a third of you here, to inquire, in addition to inquiring about where my son was placed on the waitlist with administration, and I was told that administration could not confirm where he was placed on the waitlist, and that even if he was next on the waitlist, there was no guarantee that he would be called next if an opening arose. I don't understand why they could not divulge where my child was on the waitlist in the program, and I was also disappointed in the response, most specifically because I know of another parent in the district who was able to learn of where their child is on the waitlist. In March, my neighbor relocated and withdrew their child from the program, so I knew that there was a vacancy, and I contacted administration again to inquire about the possibility of my child being selected from the current waitlist. Their response was that they would not fill the vacancy due to a lack of compliance with the balance of native English to native Spanish speakers, and that the classroom would finally be in compliance with the one native English-speaking family's withdrawal from the program. My disappointment with that response is twofold. One, I do not feel that this response is an accurate representation of the facts. Two, I feel that the administration does not exemplify racial and cultural equity among the native English-speaking applicants. First, it seems highly unlikely to me that administration was not prudent in their initial decision-making process when assigning native English-speaking students during the initial selection process. Secondly, the TWE program's key demographics from the last three school years, according to the District 65's opening of schools reports, continues to exemplify both racial and cultural inequity. During the last three years, the data shows a consistent decrease, year over year, of African-American enrollment based on the administrative selective enrollment process, while Caucasian enrollment has selectively increased at the district level. Just looking at Oakton from the years 2012 through 2014-15, African-American enrollment went from four at 7% down to three at 6% and remained steady the following year. White enrollment went from 43 in 2012 down to 38 in both years 2013 and 14, which accounted for 72% enrollment of Caucasian families from 2012, up to 79% in 2013, and then down to 20, down to 75% in 2014. If you want to look at the district, Black families have gone down, like I said, year after year, from 35 individuals in the year 2012 at 10% down to 29 individuals, leaving it down to 9%, followed by the year 2014-15, down to 7%, while white families have continued to benefit from the program, going from 69% to 70% in the last three years. I feel that while the selection process is touted as being strictly based on lottery, it has come to my attention that certain individuals have unofficially been told that they do not need to worry about being selected. Historical data continues to exemplify inequitable selective processes. I would like to request that the board be more transparent in the demographics of not only those who were selected during the lottery, but in their transparency of the demographics of those who were not selected. That is, those who have applied but were not selected. I find it interesting, in my personal experience, that all of the neighbors on my block whose children attend Oakton are selectively enrolled in the TWE program, except my child and one other child. Let's guess what race they are. I might add, has food for thought, that the process has not been transparent in terms of when families can actually apply. For example, last year, you may recall that public school choice was taken away due to the waiver, the No Child Left Behind Act. So no longer was Oakton required to allow individuals to be able to permissively transfer out of their schools. So at that point, after the deadline had already passed, and this is my final thought, after that deadline had already passed, families were then eligible to reapply. So essentially, they reopened the process because they felt that, and this is what I was told from administration, was, they wanted to give families the opportunity to apply for TWE or other permissive transfers who may not have originally applied if they were banking on that public school choice option to opt them out of the schools. So in essence, families who applied after the deadline were then placed in, or given the opportunity to join the lottery past the deadline, when other families like myself were already on track with, you know, making sure we met deadlines, making sure we, you know, did the investigative research to get our child where we wanted them to be, and they were given the same sort of, you know, opportunity that other families who were already applying should have, I feel in my eyes, been, you know, the next in line, if you will. So I feel that it's the board's responsibility to hold people who are making these selective enrollment decisions accountable. You know, I'm tired of hearing that, oh, this person got in because they have political, you know, affiliations, or, you know, so-and-so went to school with so-and-so's kid. You know, I mean, we all know that another language provides children with the opportunity to succeed at a higher rate than if they did not have that. And I'm tired of seeing African-American children being left behind, and this racial disparity and inequity, I feel, is just, it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to respond?
No, I just wanted a copy of the comments.
Oh, could you leave a copy of your comments? Do you have them written down?
Sure.
I think it's something we would all like to take a look at and give you some response to this, because we would, thank you for coming. Paula.
Hi. I just wanted to go back to the calendar conversation. I was on the calendar committee for District 65. There's also a joint calendar committee with 202. I just want to let you guys know that, you know, we worked really hard on this committee, and we put in a lot of time, a lot of hours. We've thought about working families, religious holidays, winter break, spring break, PD for teachers. What is the contract language? What does the survey say? So, I mean, we've discussed November, the fact that November has, you know, it's got Thanksgiving in it, so it's already got these three days where we're already off. We've discussed the heat. We've talked about Election Day. You know, we asked the question about Veterans Day, and why don't we, you know, why do we have spawned Veterans Day? Well, I believe it's back in about 2000, you know, there was a talk about getting rid of Veterans Day as a school holiday, and the veterans came to the school board meeting. So there was also a conversation about winter break on the 20th, leaving out on the 23rd. You know, in 2011, we went to, we had school on the 23rd, and we were out on the 24th. So I just want to assure you that the committee has, you know, been talking about these things, and this is just my perspective, is at a certain point, we sort of have to pull the plug and move on to the 17, 18 calendar. So I think we've worked really hard on it. I think there are some things that, there are obviously some questions about it, but I mean, the committee really worked very hard on this to sort of address a lot of these questions. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. We do realize there was a lot of work that went into the committee. We appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Louis Fogel. I'll be quick. I'm a little late. I want to talk briefly about the principal selection process that was distributed in the packet tonight. And I agree with Claudia, with what you said earlier in terms of the teacher's touchpoint, the most important person at the school is really the principal. And I'll second that. I'm a parent of three children at Rhodes, a seventh, a fourth, and a kindergartner, and I was on the principal selection process for the Rhodes community. And I can tell you, for a parent, the most important person at the school is also the principal. That's the person that we see, that's the person we interact with, and that's the person that our kids look up to. And unfortunately, at Rhodes, we're looking at seven principals in seven years. So we've seen a lot of turnover. It's been terrible. It's been raw. It's been frustrating. And I'm not even talking yet about the principal selection process that just happened. It was a flawed process, and it was not acceptable, what I witnessed, and what I experienced, and what I saw. That's unfortunate. You asked about recommendations. What would, I think, Mr. Agus, you said, what would you like to see different in the process? I can think of three things. Probably the most important thing really is to have a conflict of interest policy. There's nothing in there about conflict of interest. And I'm not talking about reaching out to your network and encouraging them to apply. We'd all do that for jobs, right? We all do that. I'm talking about being a recommendation, a recommender, for people that are being selected and being considered, sitting on the committee for which you are recommending people and pushing people through. Not acceptable. It's not good. It's not bad. It's not acceptable, and people know that, and it looks terrible. It looks terrible. So have a conflict of interest policy, and make sure that the senior leadership knows that, and that when it comes to, and this goes to my second point, when there is a split, the people that are the primary stakeholders in the decision-making process, the teachers and the parents, and there's a split between that and the senior leadership, meaning the principals from other schools, assistant superintendents, the primary stakeholders' opinion should count, and should count a lot. Those are the people that have to deal with the principal on a daily basis. The third recommendation I would make is to have minimum scores. I think it's number five here on the policy, talking about when you have the committee meet. There's no minimum score requirement. I think there should be a minimum score requirement. What do you do if half the people give the person ones, and other people give them threes or fives? And you're looking, you say, okay, well, we've gone through the process, and we have a total score now all below a threshold number. What do we do? So I think there should be some sort of a requirement to have minimum scores. So what I'll end with is, I'm glad that the new process is in place. I think it's unfortunate that it's a little too late for what happened in the, for what happened at Rhodes, but I'm glad that it's done going forward, and I'm hoping that the folks at Rhodes at Nichols and Oakton benefit from that. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further, what's the word? Before the board and I find this meeting adjourned.